Welcome to Harrisburg City Council Work Session. My name is Ondari Williams, I'm Chair and all City Council members. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, 2020. And Congress meeting at 5:35 PM. Mr. McAskey, please do your call.
Mr. Allen?
President.
Ms. Bowers?
President.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
President.
Ms. Madison? Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here, President. Uh, Mr. Madison, you just need to write this down. Thank you. Moving on to community business tonight, we're going to first do budgeting finance. We will start with the community business story of budgeting finance. Point to Resolution 73, 2021. I now turn it on to Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Actually, in the interest of time, should we do Resolutions 69?
Yes, please.
Let's move forward to Resolution 69 of 2021 first, or did you read that?
Yeah, Resolution 59 of 2021 is a resolution approving the fifth proposed 2021 budget reallocation.
Alright, and who from the administration drives the topics on this?
I think, sorry, I think it has to be.
I think pertaining to public safety, am I correct? That's looking at Appendix A. At first. And here? Let's start with appendix C, the public safety reallocation.
Everyone should have a amendment.
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Appendix C is fine. Chair. This pertains to a transfer among accounts. And Commissioner, do you need to comment at all on these items or appendix C?
If City Council has questions on this.
Yeah, go ahead, give us an overview of time.
As you also, you know, it's finance, it's finance today. Overview of what you need to, we can talk about. Question giveaway. Service location and also. You understand me?
First, I'll say good evening and thank for allowing me to be here today. In reference to the furniture, uh, Community Services Division, as everyone knows, is a new division that was formed, uh, February of this year. And in doing so, we received the, uh, an office space, which is a suite that at the time was being operated, that was being, um, occupied by the Engineering Division. Uh, once Engineering moved out, uh, they took everything that was necessary for their, uh, for themselves and kind of left, we were left with a shell. At that point, uh, there was a lot of cleanup that needed to be done. And once cleanup was taken care of, uh, we had a division with new, with, uh, the new CSA program, which includes the new CSA program. With that division, um, we had no furniture whatsoever, zero. We had to, uh, kind of piece things together. Uh, fortunately, we were able to get some folding tables from, uh, Director Baker, uh, from facilities and some folding chairs and just some things, items that we had to find, uh, from throughout the department, throughout the, uh, borough. So right now, that's kind of what we're operating on. We've been operating on that since February. So what we need to do is we need to actually furnish this location. Obviously, as you, you mentioned, the carpet is a, is a no-brainer. But the furniture itself, we need pods, locations for the CSA, for the community service aides to work at. Uh, right now, they have nothing to work at except for, like I said, floating tables. We need desks, we need chairs, we need file cabinets, uh, spaces for, uh, the computers and monitors. Uh, we need, we have a conference room built in inside of this division, uh, with nothing in it. We need a conference table, uh, so we can have, uh, meetings and, and, and kind of, when we do some of our outreach and, and we have to bring some of these people in and kind of explain what's going on and even, even internal meetings, we need a space for that. Uh, that obviously takes up your, your, your conference tables, your, your chairs and things like that. Uh, we also have other location within, there's multiple offices within. We have a crime analyst, uh, that's using borrowed furniture. We have, uh, the, the new Director of, um, Community Engagement was using borrowed furniture. Myself, using borrowed furniture. It's not so much about whether the furniture new or brand new or how it looks shiny or anything like that. It's just a necessity. This is a, uh, this is a division that's going to really focus on community. And when we bring the community in, we want the community to be proud of what they see. We want the community to be able to say, this is a professional organization, this is something that we stand behind. Not coming in and looking and saying, well, obviously the department does not care about the community because they don't care about this division or this department. So that's kind of the basis of where, in reference to the furniture.
So looking at a total of about $74,007 coming in. To handle that. Ballpark, I know you talked about just the Community Services Division specifically. About how many offices are we looking to furnish specifically?
The Community Services Division is made up, there's, there's actually a large space that, um, where the, there will be eight pods located for the, for the Community Service Aides. Outside of that large space, you have one, you have a conference room. Uh, you have another off, actual office that's going to be utilized as well. Uh, you have an office for, um, the crime analysts, you have the Director's Office, as well as, as well as the Division Commander or myself, my office. We also have a space for, um, like the lounge area. So those are the different locations within that division.
Very good. I will just open up to a question on, for my colleagues on Appendix C specifically. Starting down to my left, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you, I don't have any questions. Thanks for being here and sharing the explanation for the funds.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you, uh, thank you for the overview. Just one question about ballpark, how long is it expected to take before the office is furnished?
Well, once, uh, hopefully this reallocation is passed, um, once it's done, we can go ahead and start ordering furniture. However, along the manufacturer or the, however the process takes, it's up to the manufacturer. Uh, I don't have that answer. Hopefully, from what I've seen, it's about two to three weeks sometimes, maybe, maybe more. Uh, so we're hoping to have this, I'm hoping to have this, uh, before Thanksgiving. But also, we want to try to get the carpet moving as quick as possible as well, which I believe that has already been, um, there's, the process has already started, the bidding process, that's all complete and we're just waiting and we can go ahead and submit once this is, uh, once this is taken care of. So best case scenario is to get the carpet in and then get the furniture almost right behind that.
That's the only question I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you, thank you for being here to stay.
Thank you.
So where are the CSAs located in the building up there?
Right now, they're on the second floor. Um, I shouldn't say right now, this is their location, the second floor, uh, it's in the engineering suite. That's, that's where we're located.
So are you going to do any renovations over there?
We've already started, actually. I, um, we've already had the, the place painted, uh, it's, looks nice, just that we need furniture and carpet. We just need something to do with it.
I agree with the carpet, we're here 50 years. Oh, building needs carpet.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, how do CSAs communicate each other? Radio system or what?
Right now?
Yes.
Right now, would, normally the way it works is once they come in, uh, we are in, they are in this open area with the floating tables. Uh, there's a lot of just communication face to face. Uh, they do have radios, they have access to radios. When they hit the streets or when they go on the streets, uh, they go, their teams are two. And to communicate between each other, they do have city cellular phones. So they use those cellular phones as well as the radios, um, and face-to-face meetings.
Any other questions? I think I'll address. How they work over there? You know, my, in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Majors?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. I know we're looking to move money from the advertising budget, so I, I know one of the things we had talked about before was working on recruitment and retention. So by moving this, are, are we, are we saying that budget was yet over budgeted for advertising? Or are we comfortable, are you comfortable with that move that you still have enough funds? Cause it still looks like there's a, a large available balance left in advertising even after this transfer. So what has the advertising budget been used for through to date?
I, I, I missed some of what you were saying, I'm sorry, it was hard for me.
Budgeting?
Yes.
For our budget and our advertising budget, even with the movement of 15,000 from advertising, we still have $63,000 left in advertising. We talk about recruitment and retention and trying to find ways to bring in, uh, new people into the police department. And you still through three quarters of the year have $60,000 left in advertising. So have we over budgeted for advertising?
I don't think that we over budgeted, Mr. Majors. Um, just last Saturday, we gave a test, a Harrisburg City test, a police test to applicants. Uh, we took in 144 new applicants.
Yes, Madam President, just last Saturday, we gave a, uh, test police recruitment test, Harrisburg City Stand Loan Test. The first test that has been given by Harrisburg City Stand Loan Agency for over 20-plus years. We did that later Saturday during the process, we advertised heavily, uh, we took in 144 applications. Out of the 144 applications, only about 70-some people showed up. Um, they went to the first part of the, uh, test, which was a physical fitness test. Not everybody that showed up and tested, um, Sunday was a written test and only 31 people took that test. Out of 31, um, applicants, only, um, 29 passed. So we did use that money, we did advertise widely, we collaborated with some other agencies, went to some different functions, we advertised with some other police agencies. So we were doing everything that we needed to do. But I don't think that we over budgeted for that dear, um, part of the, uh, advertisement, uh, portion. I just think, you know, that we just have funds just left over that we want to move from that location into, um, CSA to help out with what they need.
Okay, and then, uh, second, well, I think you, you mentioned crime analyst. That person is a part of the Community Services Division? Is that why they're being housed there or just in terms of budgeting?
Yes, that person is part of the, um, CSA. We hired two of them, we hired one for CID, our criminal section, we hired one for CSA. So we have two crime analysts right now, sir.
Right, I was aware, I just was maybe, I just wasn't, I thought that they were a part of the public safety, that I know they were specifically titled to services division, so no problem there. Um, but no, I think everything else needs to be warranted, but we'll have a large discussion around budget time, around, uh, the police budget or to that conversation. Getting the additional data, um, from the crime analysts on a, the quarterly basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Daniels? Okay. Great, I believe that's the only thing on the budget reallocation specifically to pertain to public safety, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, let's move back to Appendix A. Anyway, we have a number of items, covering two pages are kind of moving out. Do you want to give a general synopsis of what we're looking at here?
Yeah. So there are 29, uh, good evening, Councilmembers. Um, so there are 29, uh, letter items on the reallocation, Appendix A. Uh, 23 related to, uh, cash carryover. One related to state and grant fund, one related to federal grants, and, uh, one related to FEMA. Uh, two related to contributions, and one related to CDVG funds.
And so we're pulling out those funds specifically, it looks like, for a number of, of, I guess, related projects essentially?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, so why don't we go to the second page and talk a little bit about what it's going into? And I guess just to confirm for the public, it looks to be about 5.6 million coming out and then moving into some other areas. Go ahead.
Uh, so for line A and N, they're directly related. Uh, that is, uh, a bid for State Street Projects that came in higher than, uh, than estimated in the amount of $59,589.79. And then for line B, um, actually line B, C and D are related, and this is just basically to reclassify revenue.
So what lines were you saying, you said B, C, and D?
Yes, B, C, and D. So line B is for $357,150. Line C is for $808,751.54. And line D, uh, is a reduction in estimated cash carryover in the amount of 1, 1.1,165,901.54.
Gotcha, and that's going to where?
Uh, that's just to, so it's coming from estimated cash carryover and it's being reclassified to the federal grants line and the state, uh, state and grant fund.
Okay. Thank you, go on.
Okay, so for line E, uh, that's, uh, performing a safety study in response to the fatality at intersection of North 15th and Harris Street in the amount of three, I'm sorry, in the amount of $35,000.
Is it, it might be easier, cause I know, like, we can read all where it's coming out of, but if, if you could just give a breakdown of what it's going into, I think that might be
Sure.
Better looking at page two, that just might be easier.
Okay, sure. So, uh, you want me to start with line E?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, so for line E, um, so it's coming from estimated cash carryover and it's going, uh, it's actually going into consulting.
And that's all tied into the, the safety study? Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, perfect, and?
You want me to keep going to line F?
Line F.
Okay. Also for line F, uh, that's the monthly storage fees for, um, for legal and HR files in the amount of $1,609.93. And that's coming from cash carryover and going to, uh, other rentals. And for line G, uh, it's for repayment, coming from estimated cash carryover and going to the, uh, refund or return, uh, prior year grant revenue in the amount of $15,000.
And is that a, a complete loss for us in terms of, cause we can get that back from the subrecipient as well, so that's a loss for us? Is that correct?
Brian, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah.
I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, Denise, Denise might have detail on that, but that, that's, you're right, Chair, and that's a return, a direct return to HUD for a previously made distribution to a nonprofit entity. And HUD determined, I believe, there was, it was not an eligible expenditure, so they're requesting the city return those funds directly to HUD.
That's my assumption, is that?
It's my understanding, it happens after that, it's after, or HUD then puts it back in the program when the city. So they, they, they have to technically take it back in terms of ineligible, but the city is ineligible, so it comes back to the city, back at the general program funding under.
And Denise, I'm gonna, oh, sorry, if you just want to come up to, I come to just by some. So I know we, we've gone over this a number of times, particularly that program area, um, and we've known there's been some issues. So in this case, with this particular, um, amount of $15,000 getting returned, is that a complete loss for us from the seat getting it back from the subrecipient at this point? Or is there a typical process involved with that?
Yeah, so the process is, once it is returned to HUD, um, I will actually be working with legal, um, and the legal team of the subrecipient to, uh, mitigate and have the money returned.
May I stay tuned, I see there's a few things coming out of CDVG. Alright, keep going down through the list.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so for line H, um, this is a, a reclassification of funds to pay for admin costs in the amount of $285,822.62. And that's coming from the CDVG funds, uh, and going to, uh, federal grants.
And for me, through the notes, it looks like that's due to policy rule change coming out of HUD?
Um, Denise, can you speak on that, please?
So I actually, uh, was, funds were paid out of, they were eligible costs, but they were paid out of the wrong line item. So like the other situation, that money has to be returned to HUD and then HUD will reallocate it back into CDVG. And that was for salaries.
Okay.
Okay, so for line I, uh, I'm sorry.
I keep sitting over here the whole time.
It's just those two, that's those 15 and 282.
Okay, did anyone else have any questions pertaining to that one specifically? Okay, good, thank you. I just want, I'd keep me sitting there.
No problem.
Uh, Denise, anything for the future, could you please keep us updated on those?
Absolutely, sure.
As we're just finding out, of course, there's no transparency. I just like to check up the, um, you know, the funds should not be allocated right.
Absolutely.
Because it's surprised me, but I'm thinking on the right level when, when you speak, you know, later on, as to where the money.
Yes, that was from the 2018 year, so, but absolutely.
But please keep council updated.
Certainly.
We have things like this.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry.
One, one last comment on that, just to be clear, because it's such a material amount. It's actually, it's not a, in the sense of the 15,000, it's not a really a direct return to HUD. What's happening, the general fund is to reimburse the home program and then CDVG will offer up a, a new, uh, drawdown, which then can reimburse the general fund. And that should happen, uh, before the end of the year. So in that sense, it is a wash, but it's just moving, moving to fix what happened in home and then the general fund will be reimbursed.
I don't have any problem with that, but I'd just like to know the council is updated on when things like that do happen, so we don't get a budget reallocation now, we have to ask these different questions regarding any factors. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so for line I, uh, this is for the urban search and rescue deployments and COVID vaccine clinic. Uh, it's coming from the FEMA contract and going towards overtime in the amount of $316,974.09.
And this has been something that had been discussed before, this is going to be directly reimbursed from the federal government, correct? It's the plan to hold to.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Okay, keep going.
Okay, so line J, um, this is, uh, donations received in the amount of $10,000. And that's going, uh, going towards equipment. And the same thing for, uh, line K. Donations received in the amount of $4,800. Line L, additional funds needed for lawn maintenance and snow maintenance for the lots in the amount of $50,000.
And is that due to an abundance, particularly, we're during the summer or just anticipated needs going into this winter before the budget year ends?
Um, is Dave Baker?
Hey. Good evening, council. Um, so the line item in question is for snow removal and lawn maintenance. Uh, part of this has to do with the fact that we have acquired, uh, a, a new building. We do have lawn maintenance and snow removal estimated amounts for that, uh, building. I mean, that's, that's one part of the total cost of this. Yes, yeah, I, I mean, it's not so much grass cutting, but, you know, weeding and mulching and things like that, so then. Yeah, no, we do, we have a, a father-son team that works on that. A little tiny area to mo, there's a front side area, and then, like I said, it's, there's probably a more trash pickup out there on a regular basis than anything.
Do we not have the labor to work to do the trash?
So our, our labors work in all of our parks, uh, we don't have them, uh, working on any of the actual facilities.
I still have a few more things kind of in that realm, let's keep going down the list. Up to. Line M.
Okay, so line M, uh, tree maintenance in the amount of $1,062.50, and it's going towards equipment. And then, um, line O, uh, these are additional funds, uh, needed for lawn come, tree removal, uh, or pruning, um, in the amount of the $68,000. And this is, uh, going towards the miscellaneous contracted services. Line P, repairs to the Walnut Street, uh, concrete deck in the amount of $224,000. I'm, I'm sorry, $224,088, uh, and that's going toward, uh, buildings and structures.
If you speak to that too, is that?
Yes, so, um, it was brought to our attention earlier in the year that we have some structural integrity issues in the mezzanine area, uh, where the police park, uh, the ceiling is, uh, pieces of the ceiling are, are falling in and it looks like there might be some uh, serious rust issues with the rebar that holds the concrete up. So we did call a consultant in, uh, they, they did bring out a structural engineer and they recommended that we, um, address the issue immediately before the winter hits. Uh, they are concerned about, uh, just the integrity of, of the deck, um, especially once the salt hits it. There's some issues with drainage and cracks. And, uh, I think that the salt from the snow melt and the winter, uh, really does a, a, a number on the, uh, rebar and the concrete. So that's what this fund is for, is to, uh, remove the damaged areas and replace them and fix the overall problem.
Keep going down.
Um, so, line Q, uh, is for additional funds for the 2021 City of Harrisburg Snow Services for the city in the amount of, uh, $100,000. And that's also going towards miscellaneous contracted services. Uh, line R.
Just before we jump to that, is that due to, what at this point, were we under, are we just now paying bills from last winter or?
Um, actually, is Mephenio Riggs here? No, cause Dave West retired, that was actually something that, um, he needed for his, uh, his area.
So I can kind of speak to that a little bit. They, if they have over a certain number of inches fallen per hour in the wintertime, they do call in external contractors to assist the city with snow removal. And that's what I'm assuming that would be used towards.
I'm just wondering why it's now, is it just us paying bills back from them, we know?
I think it's more of an anticipation as opposed to paying previous invoices.
Okay. So it just means they're probably low at this point?
I, I, I talked to Dave about that, I, I, I'm sorry, you're referring to the 100, the 100.
Yeah, the 100,000 for.
He, he, he did indicate to me that he was anticipating that need going into, into the first part of this, of the winter season.
My question is, let me take the budget issue. Say, when he made, it was one of the reasons that the, that particular area was so high. So is it a? So is it a hundred thousand additional funding for that snow service?
It's, yes, it would be in addition, I mean, to, to the budget, current your budget.
Can you just do a favor, find out in terms of if it's more like?
That was one of the reasons that he increased the budget in that area. So my, my concern is as well as Mr. Wallace, are we looking at from last year, I mean, the prior January, February, March of this year? Are he's anticipating that we're going to have a large snowstorm for the months of October, November, December? In January.
Budget shows they spent over eighteen thousand dollars of the annual budget.
Last year?
This year.
So far, year to date.
Year to date, so they're saying, I think I have abundance of caution. So they can have, but Dave has, he has to have as part of the city.
That'd been something that probably wouldn't come up in a mid-year budget review, had we actually had that.
And I also think we should reach out to, uh, the new director, Director Sprays and, and see if he's comfortable with that number or if there's additional. So we, we can do that between now and, um, well, we can reach out.
All right, let's keep going through this list.
Okay, so for line R and S, uh, they're also related to, uh, Dave West, who is no longer with us. So for line R, it's in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purchase of residential recycling totes. Um, and for line S, in the amount of six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-three cents. That's for the purchase of residential trash toders.
And do we know if that's due to us here in the city or is that due to our contract services with other municipalities?
That's, that's sorry, that, that would be for city residents. And, and, and there's no confusion there with the, uh, the intergovernmental municipalities, these would be city trash accounts.
Thank you, go, I'm sorry.
Okay, so for line, uh, T, U, V, and W, um, that's to reclassify a position. And that's in the amount of forty-two thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yep.
Okay, line X, uh, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is, uh, additional funds needed to pay invoices due to, uh, increased rates, uh, in usage.
Neil.
This is, um, for the zoning. We're required to use a plan code to provide zoning over outside council. You have an area where they switch over council. I told the council, I want to answer conflict questions, it's been expensive here, probably more expensive to do that. And the rates that they mail are.
Okay. And the additional Y, Z, double A, B, and C, I'm assuming is directly related to the conversations we've had about the AMBA we came up at the end of the year.
That's correct. The, the last item I can leave for, for, for Neil that pertains to the Law Bureau budget unit. But, but yes, those four lines on, um, on the expenditure side. The two million is for the plan prepayment relative to the AMBA liability. As, as we're moving forward with settlement agreement. And the additional one hundred and fifty thousand pertains to the defeasance of the stadium bond, which is tied to that, that same settlement agreement.
Correct, I know we've had conversations on that, so. And then just the forty thousand legal, Neil.
So the mayor has asked for a law bureau to, um, coordinate technical legal advice.
Could you pass the mic down, please?
The mayor had requested the Law Bureau to coordinate technical legal, legal advice on formulating, uh, plans for art money and a lot of that to do with what the compliance is going to be. The one thing that is very clear on the compliance is that it is going to be subject to what we call Part Two Hundred. Uh, which is what the O M B has Office Management Budget for audit purposes on the long term. It, in one of the related documents, it shows that it's subject to Title Six. We have no Title Six programs right now in the Civil Service Act or Civil, Civil Rights Act. And it's tied to, um, the Hatch Act. So, and so with all those monies, it was to create, uh, what the compliance is going to have to be in order to, uh, expend the money. And still on the other side of audits meeting, so it's really a starting point for it as opposed to, uh, a longer term.
Thank you. I'm just going to go down line by colleagues, any questions on Appendix A, starting this time, should I write Councilmember Daniels?
First page, first page of Appendix A, the, the, the top, the first two lines, the three hundred and fifty-seven thousand and the eight hundred and eight thousand. Those are actually interfund grant revenue amounts from the grants funds, namely fund, uh, the state grants fund and, and the federal grants fund. They were not included in the original budget for twenty twenty-one. So what we, we thought would be prudent to do would be to add those and lessen the need to draw on beginning of year cash within the capital projects fund. It's sort of a, it's sort of a cleanup type entry to say at the, really, at the beginning of the year, these would have, it would have been better serving to include these grant funding, which, which have occurred, the, the Cash Receipts Act actually taken place in twenty twenty-one. So it's just, it's just a reclassification to recognize that revenue coming into capital projects fund. It, it, it wasn't thought out in crafting the, the original twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. The, the, the revenue sources were, were, were definite, they weren't going to happen because we had already been approved for, uh, the two grants were already in play, it was just a matter of drawing down the, the involved funds.
Sure, as my major's.
Uh, just a, a quick, uh, question for Neil regarding A C, line A C. So that technical assistance, has it been provided already or this is just in case it needs to be provided to us regarding how?
No, no, it was, it was outside of what we budgeted for, for this year. We have some remaining balance in the outside council fee, but we anticipate using almost all of it. And to bring someone on board to just do this, uh, you know, that's a conservative number that we, we've bounced around a couple firms. Uh, to see, you know, what, what they thought it would be to do across the board, federal compliance issues for the money. That would be a model both for the beginning of this, but it's really looking the full five years down the road for when the money has to be fully expended. On, and different expenditures that are available have different compliance obligations depending what the city picks. Um, so it's a conservative number, I don't expect that we'd spend it all. But I was just trying to make sure we get to the end of the year, depending how deep down we get into this. But, um, it's an issue that the, the mayor raised with us about having technical assistance and thought best that we provide someone who's got some experience in federal and state money, uh, to do that.
But you're saying, has a.
Firm has not been retained.
That's all right, no firm has never retained. And I would, again, as we've mentioned at almost every city council meeting, we are more than willing and welcome to have this conversation about how we look to spend these funds, this is the conversation that the whole community needs to be involved in and we look forward to it. So I met these, you know, good to hear we're thinking about that, but we haven't talked about given.
Sorry, I made a cut off, I apologize. It's, in my imagination, they're going to basically say, these are the compliance things you have to worry about if you do A, these are the compliance things you have to worry about if you're doing B and C. D, there's a lot of options there, some have a lot of compliance, some have relatively minimal compliance. Um, and so the idea is to basically provide a framework, uh, for choices, so they're informed choices that the city government makes, the council, the mayor. Or when they're picking choices, they have to look all the way down the road for what that, uh, long-term compliance obligation is, both staffing, you know, and, and, and external.
Right, absolutely, I think, you know, we all know when it comes to federal money, people make their careers on reviewing and doing the audit functions, so to ensure we're having that technical assistance upfront is, is important. But still look forward to having a conversation with the administration when they're ready to talk about how we use, uh, those funds. Everything else, I think, uh, makes sense and we have, uh, so we have a new, I mean, I think we all know, um, it's, uh, we had the departure of our, uh, Public Works Director, so, uh, the movement of some of those funds while would have been agreed to by the previous director, we can talk with the new director, uh, I've had an opportunity to speak with him and with some of his plans. Um, but we need to try to give him a little bit of flexibility as he's looking to make some, uh, significant changes to, uh, our public works department. Thank you.
Councilmember President.
All your words went together. Thank you, Neil, for that update and, uh, how soon do you think we're going to retain services of the local council?
Uh, pretty quickly, I would think.
Well, I was going to bring in, uh, a group who was going to give us a PowerPoint on the American West Africa grant funding. Uh, when I was in, at conference last week, we had an hour uh, to spend with those individuals to tell us how, what categories we can use, we can only use five categories. And how, uh, we intend to spend money. Also, it, how the federal government is going to regulate the money and watch and make sure that they give reports effective five days after you spend it. So I'm very interested in seeing who you're going to retain, because I wanted them, the company to come in and do a PowerPoint, uh, to council. And they go over all the specifics of how we could spend the money and why we cannot spend it in certain areas, so I'm looking forward to hearing.
Yeah, there, there's clearly some real lines, I think some people, this is going to jail, honey. You want to get it right, because it's.
If you don't get it right, if they disspecify, if you don't get it right, the federal government is going to hold your account.
They're going to be, and, and I think individual officials.
And they will, they will take the money back.
Yep.
Immediately.
There's a callback provision, it's very severe i- in this particular act.
I'm just sorry everyone was not able to go, but I think it was a very good PowerPoint. And they took their time, you know, afterwards, there's several questions. Certain areas where I think that the administration wanted to spend the money, they cannot spend. So we have to be very, very careful how we allocate that money.
Ultimately, the allocation belongs to council, the, the administration is suggesting, and council determines the allocation.
Okay, um, the Labor Three Position, uh, where is that position?
I mean, the Parks Maintenance Shop.
Are you adding another position?
Uh, yeah, we'd like to take a unused administrative position and move it to the Parks Maintenance, uh, Labor Three Position.
So, so you don't have an administrative assistant?
Uh, so that the administrative, yeah, that the administrative assistant was, uh, I think there's a clerical error there as far as adding the position and it should, it did not need to be added in that area, we were trying to get more, uh, Parks Maintenance Labors. So we're just trying to rectify that issue.
So who does your ministry for?
We do currently have a admin in the position.
Had to, okay, I don't have. Um, I do have a question on, on line P. You had estimates, so what type of estimates did you receive regarding the structure of that building?
Uh, so we, we did not, I mean, we got one estimate on there. We contacted Low Bar, this was in a, an emergency, um, request to have the work done, so we did not, uh, get multiple different estimates. We had, uh, they had a, um, an engineer come in and do the work and that's whenever they, uh, came up with the numbers for us. But they are, they are estimates, they are not, uh, like, uh, this is what it will cost, because until they actually get into the structure itself. You know, they're, they're not sure, hopefully this is more than we need, but again, you don't know until you start, uh, excavations.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you, I don't have many questions, um, if you could just go over the senior low income tree assistance for mobile status, I know we have a summary here. But just for the public's benefit, if you could just go over what's been done and, and what we love to do throughout the year.
So with our, our senior program and our low income program, uh, we have, um, we, we have many, many requests, we, we have requests almost every single day, uh, for qualified individuals, uh, to remove or trim uh, either low income or senior trees throughout the city. With the senior program, uh, we have, uh, removed twenty-six, um, trees so far. Uh, I'm sorry, we've pruned twenty-six trees, we've removed five trees, uh, for seniors, low income. Um, we have removed uh, nine trees and twenty, we've done, uh, twenty prunings. Oh my gosh, I apologize here, um, I have too many numbers on my paper here, so. The numbers I just gave you, that is our estimated, uh, a need so far, whenever this was put together. The. Okay, so, uh, we have done, we take care of eighty-six senior trees and a hundred and twenty-eight low income trees so far this year with the monies that we've been given. Again, this is, this is a pilot program that, uh, council approved as of this year. Uh, we have not seen, uh, any program so far that has had such, uh, positive results, uh, we have people tell us on a regular basis, uh, they'd never be able to do any of this type of work without uh, the city's assistance with this, so we thought it would be, um, you know, a good idea to request additional funding to get us through until the end of the budget season.
Thank you, and then just overview of the process, if someone would be interested in getting a tree prone to remove, how would they go about even seeing if they're, uh, if they qualify for it?
Uh, so the, the absolute best way to do is to go on the city's website, um, and if you do that, they can, uh, go through, we have a senior tree or we have a low income tree, which if you go on the website, there are categories for both. There, uh, that's the way that, that they'll get the process started. Uh, they can call the, uh, city three-one-one number as well and they will route, route the individuals to the proper area. Uh, they can call the Parks and Rec Department, um, as a third way to do it. And, you know, it's, or, or they can come in person, either Reservoir Park or, uh, downtown, um, head to police station as well.
Thank you, it's the only question I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you, I guess just one follow-up question, so the amount of money you requested through the end of the year will satisfy, uh, what's left here from the end of the summer and any anticipated requests?
That, yeah, I mean, that's what we are hoping for, uh, really, I, I think right now it's the amount of requests that we get will exceed the amount of work that we can do. Because of how busy, uh, individuals are that, that do the work, so, uh, we've kind of estimated what we typically are able to achieve in the timeline that we'll have left after the money's reallocated. So we're trying not to ask for more than what we'll use and, and obviously we want to use as much as possible, so. We will have more requests than we do have funds, but we feel that we'll be able to best, you know, be able to get those amount of requests done within that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Right, back to Council President.
Um, I just have one question, Dave, uh, the individuals on North Sixty Street have taken that tree down or have moved it to the decision table?
Uh, North Sixty. I'm sorry, was that?
Miss Cam, man.
Oh, uh, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure we took care of that.
Still have the sidewalk.
Um, it's a, as far as taking care of that, that was a little more in-depth, uh, we, we can go over that, I can give you more detail on that later if you'd like.
Five twenty-one with the West Coast Street, you do tree work?
Yeah, uh. Yeah, then, so we didn't remove it, we did a pruning out there. Yeah, it's even smaller now. It's even smaller now.
It wasn't me, I mean, that's not a tree, trees, just. Anyway, I mean, I've lived there, so I'm looking to see what tree you did five twenty-one with. That was a.
Yeah, and sometimes whenever they are smaller like that, if we do a pruning, it saves us a lot in the long term, uh, because it'll make the, the leaders run proper, you know, we won't have co-dominant, I mean, it'll, the canopy of the tree will be more healthy in the long run and the tree should last longer if it's pruned correctly when it's young.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. So the twenty-sixteen. Thank you, Mr. Baker. So the twenty sixteen year prunings and the five senior removals, twenty low income prunings and the nine. Low income removals. So you need, are you going to budget for those or is or um jobs that you?
Yes.
So what would your budget be like for that, for the twenty six, five twenty nine?
So that that is what we were asking for the current funding for us to do that. That's what we received when this document was created as far as the need. Um as of today, you know, it was a few weeks ago, so there are additional as of today, but. These particular numbers are what we feel that we can get done before the end of the budget year.
And that that's to the end of the year.
Yes.
And thank you, Dave. Let's go on to the final appendix B. Um. This just seemed big to me. I was looking at it, so I know we're looking at twenty nine thousand. So we're transferring budget line from suffice to capital, but that accounts for the purchase of approved capital items. What are we talking about here?
Uh good evening, good evening, councilmembers, Dwayne Martin, state engineer. Alright, so we had a traffic signal cabinet hit at the intersection of Forrester and Commonwealth. So the one out there is sort of patched together, but we need a new cabinet. Um we had enough. Revenue or actually money in our supply account, but we went to put through the um. Uh purchase order, uh the controller's office recommended that we transfer it over to capital account so that it um. Give you, you can capitalize the uh expenditure. So that it's just a trans, it's just a interdepartmental or inter-budget transfer from supply to capital.
That makes sense now. I just read it and I thought that was the most vague transfer funds I've seen.
Uh I I wish I didn't have to do it, but.
I got you.
Gotta follow those Gadsby rules, I guess.
Does anyone have any questions on that item? Alright, I believe that concludes all of the budget reallocation. Um we'll go ahead and. Move this uh towards our session happening immediately following this.
Wayne, don't move. Question about the fifteen street quarter, fifteen and Hershey in the study. Yeah, what what was the outcome of the study?
So.
That's where the little kid was killed.
Alright, so we didn't do a study yet. We did it um actually with the assistance of the police. We did a um. Crash analysis. There are uh crash. Normally, the crash analysis is done with reportable crashes, but the city does have records of unreportable crashes, and so there are um. Uh crashes associated with left-hand turns and and there is a blind spot. It's not the same direction that the driver was coming. It's the actually the opposite direction. It's uh northbound. On fifteenth, so working with the cemetery and trying to remove a large tree in the cemetery. And try to relocate their fence and cut their bank back. So we've, I've actually applied for a grant. Um through the um transportation alternative programming, but there was a number of suggestions. I think there's a petition floating around here somewhere for. Um different intersection control, whether it be um traffic signal, whether it be uh change. Uh north about fifteenth to one way to, so there's a lot of ideas. Um so the thirty five thousand that's in there is. Proposal that we received from Kittleson, who was approved last week to do the study. So that would be not only a traffic study for safety purposes, but also. All of the um warrant evaluations to see if a signal would be warranted. Um so there's some public outreach in there, although we're trying to use Tri-County Regional, um um Tri-County Community Action, but. They're kind of booked, so we're gonna uh just fire and try to find another uh subconsultant to do that community outreach portion, but. Uh I do have the proposal, the fast order proposal for that, but it's more than just a traffic study. It's it's. A full intersection control valuation, one-way street analysis. There's three different concepts uh for that intersection. Um and then that, the results of that study can then hopefully the grant. Gets awarded and we can line up the perfo- the recommended recommendation of the report with the grant proceeds and actually implement changes.
Okay, did you talk to Department Transportation officials about making it a one-way street as well as closing off the. Order coming into the fifteen street quarter from the bypass?
So I talked to Department of State Department Transportation officials about the intersection itself. The fifteenth street is a city street, so that would, that would actually be councils.
I thought we had, I thought a part of the bypass uh goes into the Susquehanna.
Oh.
We would have to communicate with commissioners and the board there.
Right, I I was talking about fifteenth and her, you're talking about fifteenth and.
No, the street itself, I wanted it to be one-way.
Yeah.
And we're coming off the bypass uh on the right hand side, which couldn't go out. Where's the bypass? And you said that I had to talk to the commissioners in Susquehanna because some of that flows into there.
That that intersection is in Susquehanna Township. That is true. I did not have the opportunity to talk to them. However, there there's a Pendox connects program and they're doing some camera, it's a chemistry project. So there's some resurfacing on chemistry and and the bypass. Um when that, when that Pendox connects, um that connects means they reach out to municipalities for input. That will be the ideal time for making those comments because Susquehanna Township will be involved in that as well.
I just had the community, I have a uh. Edition from the community, I think, over two hundred and fifty signatures. And they're concerned about making it one-way so that uh anyone coming off the bypass not come onto the fifteen quarter, street quarter because of the young kids playing baseball during the summer months. And now that I think they're doing soccer, so when they come off, they're coming doing forty, fifty thousand hours damage tree. So we really do look at doing something to try to make sure that our kids are.
So, right, so that one-way um one-way conversion of fifteenth street is part, is one of the concepts.
Merging on to fifteenth and that.
So we fifth, so we fifteenth. Believe it's north, it's northbound, right? Fifteen from part of the bypass northbound. That's the way it's drafted. Thank you.
Alright, able to move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh now we'll move over to discussion of resolution uh seven, I'm sorry, resolution, yes, seventy three twenty one. Kirk, can you go ahead and read that?
Resolution seventy three of twenty twenty one is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg. Negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with Impact Harrisburg. Provide funding for the third round of neighborhood business stabilization program grants.
So my question for the administration on this specifically, I know we've had um numerous discussions with Impact Harrisburg and. And Sheila, so thank you for what you've done so far. Um the amount that we were looking at was one point three million. And where are we proposing for the administration? Are we pulling that out of? Uh just the general fund specifically? Is that what we made a determination or what is the administration recommending at this point?
The administration did not put that in the budget reallocation.
So it shouldn't be past this resolution. Is the administration going to?
So I think that, I think the idea would be that they came down at the same time as the budget reallocation, that the grant period was already opened and closed. Which was what uh Ms. Dowford had presented to this council before. Um the mayor did say if council moves to put it in there, he's not going to object to it. Um but he had not moved to put it into the budget reallocation. It would come out of the uh. I believe the same line items, it's a number of the items tonight, which is.
Me to carry cash.
The cash carryover.
It's a capital.
Right, and it would go into the, there's there's grants that the council has awarded previously that are simply. They're an award letter as opposed to a grant agreement, you know, and either way, they go into, I believe, the same account in finance. And uh the finance office can identify which account it would go to. So if the council thought uh. That that number was appropriate and they wanted to do it, but the number in the contract is actually blank, that is the request number from Impact Harrisburg to the city. And so, you know, uh and Ms. Dowford has made the case uh for Impact Harrisburg in the board request. And uh so that is what the grant agreement is for. Um but I think it, you know, essentially it's up to the council at this point whether they want to make an amendment. Uh to the uh budget reallocation schedule. Um and it wouldn't have to be tonight, but it would have to be, I guess it would have to be tonight because we combined the two meetings, you know, at the legislative session tonight after this session. They would have to make it there or they'd have to set it aside because right now it's an unfunded MOU as it sits right now.
Well, that's why I was really under the impression that maybe something could be in the. Budget reallocation wasn't there, so I, so I was trying to get a sense. But usually if we're expending funds, the administration will give us a sense of where we're in.
So so this, this, this uh resolution was requested by Impact Harrisburg and 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 then moved by the council president. It was not moved by the administration, which is permissible that someone can make a request.
That I, that's what I get. It's just really this person's funds is administrated. Function of the administration.
I I I cannot really counter that. I am just simply advising you the status of where we are at this moment, which is that the mayor advised that. Uh if the council wishes to move it, he would not object to it.
Just further exemplifying an issue we've had for the last six months. So, I mean, I know you show up, I'm not giving you any, you know.
I I I believe I understand the conundrum.
This is where we have been. So so it's just kind of a continually shirking of responsibilities, but. That is something I I'm just going a little bit.
I think, I think uh Brian could speak to availability of funds to do it.
Well, well, that's just part of it. It's like we can certainly make a recommendation to budget. Transfer and reallocation, but we are not the administration. So we are, you know, like the availability of funds right now have the impact to. The general fund, all of those things. We don't have that information, coupled with the fact that we haven't had any clear, especially in the budget review, which was part of my. Not hesitation, but before we move forward with this, to get a true sense of that. So we are operating a little bit in the dark on this. As much as I don't want to dismiss or not see value in moving forward with this, it is the administration's responsibility. To make sure that if we move forward with this, the funds are allocated both per like properly. And that we know exactly where they're coming and the impact to the overall budget remaining for twenty twenty one. So these are missing pieces that we just don't have, which quite honestly is now makes it the umpteenth time. That I've asked for this information or asked for anything pertaining to where we're at for year end. Um so that's just something that, again. Not shooting you as a messenger, but it's just a constant problem that we found in the last six months with the absence of the mayor in any of these processes. So I'm not really sure how to move forward with this resolution. Because in theory, on paper, we agree, I'm sure collectively we agree with the concept. But I'm not making any type of amendment on a budget reallocation without knowing the overall impact of these funds and dispersing that. That is an administration responsibility, not ours. Because we have to prove based on the information we get from the administration on the availability of funds where they're coming from. Um so I'm not, I'm kind of at a loss with how to advise my colleagues on this. We can certainly move forward with resolution, but I don't know that we can disperse some funds until we get anywhere with the administration. Sheila, I'm sorry, that's not any bit impact to you. I am generally in favor of moving forward this as I have from the, from the get-go. But before that, since you were here, Sheila, was there anything materially that changed based on what is presented in the resolution based on conversation?
Thank you, council, for this opportunity uh to uh address you, um any questions that you might have. And for um actually presenting the resolution um. That is under consideration and the process of allocating funds. Uh for the purpose of of working in partnership with Impact Harrisburg on the third round funding initiative. Um there is nothing uh material, Mr. Allen, that has changed since my last presentation to you. Uh we are moving a pace as we indicated we would in evaluating the applicants. We have one hundred and two applicants. And we have a, it is a strong applicant pool. I would just uh reiterate um. What I have said in previous presentations, which is that cities are in fact um really the main drivers of economic. Um the the of of economic uh capabilities within their communities and. Uh it is Impact Harrisburg's uh. Responsibility under the strong plan to work in concert and partnership. With actors such as the city and others, other entities, and we think we have done so. And we would welcome the opportunity to engage around this third one round funding initiative. This does come on the heels of the slight reopening of the city um in a um. Uh post-COVID, but nonetheless um I'm still fraught uh situation that we have experienced. You can look around the city and you can see the empty storefronts. You can see where they are. Um I indicated in my first and second and perhaps third presentations that this is a small business initiative. This will help small businesses, those that in many instances really don't have access to the type of capital. That some of our largest or larger um um community um um businesses have uh have access to. That's why we have really served as an advocate for the small business community. Um I would welcome any questions that you might have about this initiative as we've indicated. In previous presentations, we look forward to working with you all on this, on this process, and we feel good about it.
Thank you, Sheila. Let me go just go through questions from my colleagues that was at my left, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. I guess I don't have any questions. I sort of echo your sentiments on where is the funding coming from? Should we move forward, so?
Councilmember Green.
Thank you for coming tonight. Um I don't have any questions, so I agree with my colleagues. Uh without the information, it's hard for us to make decisions and it will be irresponsible for us to make those decisions without knowing the information that we need. Thank you.
Council President.
I concur with the other members. I'd uh like to know where the funding is coming from and where we're at. Mid-year, we never received the mid-year review. We never got an accounting of where we are financially, so. I don't want to impact the city by taking one point three million out of a fund that we don't know where it's coming from. But it's certainly a a great incentive by you to want to help the small businesses. We want to do that as well because we do sell the empty storefronts. We want to make sure we utilize this city and that certainly would help them out of mind. So. So we get that information, of course, you know, as uh Mr. Allen uh attested to, we have not had any consideration from the administration the last. Six or seven months really about where we're going and what we're going to do in the mid-year review and as far as the American Rescue Plan money. That as well. We've been asked consistently for the last five months, what are we, what are your plans? Give us a plan. How to utilize this money in the best efforts to the residents in the city of Harrisburg. So until we have that information. I agree with my colleagues that we really need to look at where the money's coming from and how it would impact the budget.
Well, and I think just even building upon that, I think my overall frustration is there's so much back and forth. Like we hear from there, well, council should have a plan and we would like to have a discussion and in due process of how we typically do things. We do it in a public forum. This is not something that we do behind closed doors and do this. I've never can, I feel like that's part of the problem, but part two of that. Is looking at the actual accounting side of it. Usually, if we're going to make any decision to expend funds at any level or any way, shape or form. We have to get a sense of kind of the debits and credits and where things are, and that's what's missing part of this. Um so.
So I could speak to that if I may just, which I think I have an obligation to speak to, is is when they say. Cash carryover, they're basically saying take money out of the fund balance, which is.
I get that. We just extended a lot of that tonight, but we still don't know.
I I understand that. That's really, so so not out of any other source.
And we take out a fund balance and where we at after that.
Right.
Right, you need to know where the fund balance is afterwards.
Where's the mid-year report? We did not receive.
Okay, good. Now, Councilmember Majors, questions?
Yes, so the only question I have would would then pertain to, uh so if and when uh Ms. Ford, the uh. We were to allocate any funds, how how quickly could you get a program up and running? Uh should we not be able to reallocate anything today, say, if it's at a future session? Uh from the time that is executed on our end to you're able to get uh funds to uh applicants, how about how long do you think that process would take?
Mr. Majors, in point of fact, that process would probably take less than a week.
Okay.
Um we are, um I um, I say this with a great deal of humility. We are um. You know, we've become very facile at at running these types of programs. We've done it enough to know how to do it. We know how to do it quickly. We have an accounting system that's set up with a third party that enables us to get this done efficiently and effectively. And um I would really, um I think it is quite unfortunate that we are caught on the horns of a. Of such a dilemma. I need to, I'm a resident of the city as well as the executive director of Impact Harrisburg and I. I um I'm, you know, I have a, an opinion on these things too. Um I know that the head of the Economic Development Department for the city, Mr. Banks is here. I'm sure that. I'm sure that he understands the importance of of really providing funding to small businesses at this very, very fraught economic time. And I would welcome the opportunity for the administration and city council to find a way through. And I understand, I don't know everyone who was seated to my right, but I'm assuming that at least one or two people with expertise in the budget area. I don't profess to know exactly what the procedures are, but I do know that this is a good program that really, in my view, we've talked about it any number of times, should be funded. And if there is any objection, I think I have done the work that my board asked me to do, which is to go out and act as an advocate and to talk to the leaders of the city. I have spoken to the mayor twice, perhaps three times about this, and I have had the opportunity to speak to all of you several times. I thank you for that. I I would like for us to be more functional than not. That's what creates a good, functional city. There are in this room right now, I'm almost done, just one more minute. In this room right now are small business owners who are grant applicants. They are taxpayers. We are not, I have to say that they're not asking for anything to which they have not actually provided some some funding of their own through, in the form of taxes and the like. That's important. Cities are supposed to show reciprocity. And I think this is a a structure that's in Pact Harrisburg, which permits that cities to actually engage with residents. Okay, small business owners, not big business owners, I've said this time and again. These aren't folks who are going to have to rack P dollars. That's not what they're doing. They're looking for capital for equipment, okay, to pay for small items that will help their businesses actually thrive. And who knows, maybe out of the 102 applicants we have, of which 80 something we have deemed eligible, maybe, maybe you will see, I need to say one more thing, it's a very diverse group, more diverse than you've ever seen anything when you look at the larger institutions in this community. And out of, we would hope that out of that group of 80 something, that you will see groups of individuals, companies that will thrive, survive and grow and become very successful. That's what cities are supposed to do. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Ford, and I'll just, you know, thank you for your passion. I don't think that anyone up here is, has any concerns with the efficacy of the program and or the effectiveness of the program. This would be the third round of of funding. So I think that also points to the fact that this body and the administration have worked together in the past to ensure that we would be able to utilize funds in a proper manner to ensure that our small businesses through a global, a once in 100 year global pandemic could receive assistance through any means possible. I don't think there's anyone up here that is against that. I think what we're speaking to is the the communication piece that needs to occur. And I think that is, and it's unfortunate that our small business owners who are in need may be a little bit caught in the middle of this, but I think all of us have a commitment to our our residents of the city of Harrisburg and our small business owners, who quite frankly are the lifeblood of of our our community, right? They are the ones that help ensure that our our residents have services that they need. So I don't think that's it. I think, as was pointed out earlier, it's the communication that needs to occur between an administration and council. And I I'll leave it there. What we do want to see, our folks work together. And again, we are, we're a city that's coming out of Act 47. We're dealing with a lot of issues all of the concurrently. And we want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing anything financially as we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, and I want you all to know that I appreciate and value your perspective. Even if you disagree with anything that I've said, nonetheless, what is most important is to have good and open communication.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Daniels.
This is more a question for you. So. So if we authorize this, we still have, I mean, we.
We have to allocate it.
Right. So is there a reason why we can't be brought that allocation down given that, I mean, we weren't in a position to pay off the the debt recently, and I don't think we've consumed all of that.
No, there's there's not been a set agreement on where the general fund balance is going to end this year. There's a wavering viewpoint between the Controller's Office, between Dan Conley and the administration, and there's not an agreement on that number. I'm always hesitant from my standpoint to say, hey, let's allocate 1.3 million out of the general fund when I don't know.
What's the variance?
The variance is between 6 and 8 million between between two. And the administrations take, back in August, when we were pushing for the midyear budget review, was that, you know, the general fund isn't as high as everyone thinks it's going to be, but I've not seen any qualification of that amount since then. So for me, it's just kind of operating in the dark. I don't know that it is prudent on council to allocate funds without seeing. It's like your checkbook, right? I'm not going to just write a number and a check if I don't know what the balance is and what we have remaining or a sense of what remaining expenses remain that we are obligated to pay this year to. I suspect that we have a balance and I suspect we have enough that we could do this. Any impact debt repayment and all those things. I just have no assurances or no actual documentation that shows me that. And that's been something, I mean, if you all, I've asked the administration for, for now months to be able to understand that. We could very well pass this conditional on getting some confirmation by where and how we're doing that. But again, I'd like to be able to move forward with this, but have that sense of assurance. I just feel like, again, we have a, I mean, for me, as budget financial, as council, we have a fairly sheer responsibility to act appropriately with the funds. We also have to have an accurate accounting of the funds. So that's just kind of my, I'm kind of in that rock and a hard place on that. I mean, there are two options that we could do. I am open to. Alex, but either way, we can't just allocate the dispersment of funds.
You have the authority to make a motion to amend the budget reallocation, to add a schedule from a particular cash carryover of 1.3 million dollars or $2. The information that was presented by the controller and by Dan Conley and the finance offices here is that there is significantly more funds than that in the in the in the current fund balance. So I'm just, I'm just, based on what you've said, the the money is there. The real question becomes not one of the moment, but one of the future. That's the real question. If you use the 1.3 million or any portion of it, what decisions does that make on the budgetary decisions for 2022?
Right. And those are, that's why there's value in in why we have discussions around it.
I I don't disagree, but I just, so but just as we're speaking publicly of the city's finances, the money is there. It's just that it it a decision, like always, of that amount of money, always have implications of choosing between one item and another item. And I realize what you're saying is you don't have enough information to to know that you're making a choice.
Right, without an unintended consequence.
Right. But but the but just because I think the public have seen those presentations on numbers before, it's important to put a context to it.
Right. And the the thing that we're missing and we have been missing is we know, and while it's been presented as such in the past from the administration, that in the fourth quarter is when we pay a significant portion of bills, and so there's a significant drawdown.
The fund balance is, the point is not allocated. That is numbers are, that's not in the budget, so that, so as opposed to what the budget.
Point, though, look at what we literally today are allocating roughly five, more than $5 million out of the general fund balance as part of the better reality. We're seeing that allocated and allocated. We don't know that impact on that, and and that's part of the problem. So I I would love to be the person to say, yes, let's just do a little amendment, do that. But that is not a prudent function that I should take.
Yeah, and I am not breaking the recommendation you do or you don't. I am simply advising you.
Correct.
That you have authority to do it.
I would like to point out where we are as a as a body, if I may, with the indulgence of of council. We have $375,000 that we have budgeted that because that is the remaining balance of on the economic development project side of Impact Harrisburg's budget. We have allocated those funds for purposes of providing grants under the third round funding. The 1.3 million dollar number represents the the difference, the delta, the differential between the total amount of those 86 or so grants and the 375,000 we are able to provide. So I just want to be careful that you understand that the 1.3 million is that, is that delta and that that is what we see, because I think that the community needs to know that this is a program that does in fact benefit small businesses. I just feel, you know, I I know I sound impassioned and I know that this is a a bit of a catch 22, but it is very important that that the community in at writ large and as a whole understands this is what we are trying to do. So what, in fact, we can have a contingent sort of resolution of this tonight, which would be, you know, you have a series of alternatives and you have to structure your decisions based upon what is the right and ethical thing to do. And I appreciate and value that. I think that what we will do, Impact Harrisburg, what we will do is actually go back out to our potential grantees and let them know what the results were. And they will know, though, that we actually did in fact make a pitch on their behalf. I think it's important that they understand how this how this unfolded.
And Sheila, if the message back from me directly to anyone right now is that there is not, and I will not speak to everyone in this body, but I believe there's broad-based general support in doing this. There's not a, there's not a lack of enthusiasm on our part to to expel these funds. But I also take very seriously the responsibility of this, and us to make these financial decisions based on facts, information and knowledge, and that part is missing right now.
I will absolutely, Mr. Allen. I understand and appreciate that, and that will also be communicated. And it is, you know, I have to say that communication breakdowns shouldn't stop government from acting. That has nothing to do with you all. I understand that. But it is really critical as a resident of the city and as a voter and as a person who has lived here for close to 30 years, that everyone understands democracy in action means that everybody should participate. Everyone should participate, even those who are just trying to make a living. Thank you very much.
I agree. And, you know, I think the the challenge, and I've been somewhat reticent not to make anything that we do overtly political in, in particularly in the actions we take to carry out the business that we've been elected to do. But I have really been extremely, extremely, and I can't emphasize this enough, frustrated with the lack of commitment back from the mayor's office and working with us on these things. If you go back or anyone goes back, for anyone in the media here tonight goes back six months, you will see every single meeting, one of the members of this body has asked for information that we have never received, never been able to get any information back on. And when we closed for summer recess and we talked about the impact of money specifically, you know, if if there was incorrect assumptions that any of us were making, we wanted to know and we never got any of the data back. I have always said this is not a a political ruse. I make data-based decisions based on the things that we do and the recommendations I make to my colleagues. And I know that my colleagues take that just as seriously. I am, I have, I'm so disappointed that we're at this point because the impact of this is not just the small businesses who need this. It's the overall community that we're trying to work to better serve. And this this logjam that we're in is is really frustrating. The only overture that I've heard, and I've not heard from the mayor directly in months, is that the mayor is willing to reach, meet with us one-on-one to discuss the revenue, the rescue plan dollars that we could allocate. That is not an appropriate function of being able to have public discourse around these items and make sure that people understand what we're thinking, how we're doing it, and 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 make sure this is a public forum in which we do business for the community. So I mean, I am sorry to say that at this point, I will have to place this on hold for further, or recommend placing on hold for further consideration. But I compel the administration to come back, whether it be a better reallocation, some accounting of where this is coming from, the impact to that, and where we stand with related expenses going into the the remainder of Q4 that we are already in. That is, i- if if the administration can't do that, then I'm not entirely sure what the administration can do at this point. But this should not continue to happen over any of the business that we're trying to conduct in this body. I don't know what I can say about this. I apologize to my colleagues. But I will conclude the business, the business of the budget finance committee right now.
Thank you.
Back to the council president. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Ms. Dow.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Allen, what do you want to do?
To place on hold for now.
Moving on to continuation of the committee business, we would now move on to the Building and Housing. I'll now turn the meeting over to Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. The Building and Housing Committee has one resolution for discussion this evening. It's Resolution 68 of 2021. Mr. Petraskey, could you please read it into the record?
As Resolution 68 of 2021 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate in terms of a professional services agreement, Civitas, LLC, for the purpose of providing professional services to the city's Department of Building and Housing and Development, including but not limited to technical assistance, general consulting services for general technical assistance led tier to cite specific, specific environmental review and environmental review for the emergency demolition.
Thank you. Good evening. I see Ms. Hill. Mr. Banks, a present on behalf of the administration, if you wouldn't mind. I know this is an annual contract, but if there are any updates, let us know.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, as well as ladies and gentlemen of council. Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this evening. With regard to Resolution 68 of 2021, Civitas, on background, of course, has been assigned to provide its technical assistance for the past two years in the Department of Building, Housing and Development. Some of the services on background that they've provided, of course, for 12 years of expertise work with CDBG Home and ESG programs. Of course, they conduct environmental reviews, they do the underwriting for home development projects, policies, procedures, white papers, and of course, staff training. But what I would like to bring to council's immediate attention is the fact that recently I sent a memo to the mayor requesting that, of course, that Civitas, of course, provide us, you know, an opportunity to memorialize our standard operating procedures for the purposes of educating, equipping and empowering staff to carry out the duties of their roles by drafting and implementing a departmental policy and procedures manual. So in plain speak, what occurs in the Department of Building and Housing, as well as many of the other departments in the city, in time that there's turnover of staff. But the staff that are currently in those departments may not have the requisite skillset and or expertise. So what we're going, which you're going to find yourself, council, as well as the city, is that when people change, that knowledge, of course, changes as well. So if Ms. Hill decides to leave and other members of the department leave, we as a city are left without a continuation of that particular skillset. So we're requesting that they create a policy manual that no matter who sits in these seats, no matter who sits in these positions, the city can continue to move forward and thrive and actually have a working knowledge that is necessary to continue the good works that this department has been doing for the past many years. Ms. Hill, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any questions, considering it's an annual contract, but I'll begin to my right with Councilwoman Green. Any question?
Thank you. I don't have many questions. Just a few. How many years have we been working on this process?
Two years.
Two years. And what, how do we? Two years, and what, how do we, how do we estimate, like, the work they've done for us? Like, how do we evaluate it to to keep bringing them back? What makes us want to work with them again?
So they have been very insistent in helping DBHD clear up three years' worth of findings through HUD. We just had one this past year within a couple months, and this is the first one in recent history that DBHD has had no findings with with HUD.
Thank you. If we could just, in the future, not just with this con- this consultant, but all consultants, look at how we're reviewing them and and why we continue to work with them and present that when we present the contract we've removed with City Council. I think that would be very important for us to understand why we're continuing to work with with these providers, just so that we can make that informed decision.
Madam Councilwoman, I'd like to just add for the record as well that this is essentially budget neutral, that the the cost of the consultant is covered by HUD for them to provide the expertise that's necessary for the department, of course, to continue to move forward.
Understood, but um, and working with consultants is important for us to understand and know that we're getting the best consultant, our best company, period, whether it's budget neutral or budget positive or budget negative, I don't care if they're giving us money. We need to understand what's the benefit to the city to make sure we're getting the best services possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you. President Williams, any questions?
Uh, yeah, but could you go to the next member and come back to me, please?
Yes, Vice President Allen, any questions?
Uh, so no questions. Mr. Banks, one of the things that I don't know if you've familiarized yourself with yet is the audit that's been formed over the last few years, and particularly the material weaknesses that have been placed or indicated within building and housing. So to your point about procedure manual, I think that's absolutely vital and necessary to make sure that we've addressed that. I'm not sure we fully addressed those material weaknesses that have been outlined in that audit to date yet.
Um, Mr. Vice President, those material weaknesses have been addressed, and I would like to commend Ms. Hill for the work that she's done thus far. However, one of the main reasons why I was brought into this position is to address some of those outstanding concerns because of my previous relationship and current relationship with the US Department of Housing and Development.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmen Majors, any questions?
With respect to this, no, but in terms of the policy manual, while it's, that would be something separate and apart from what's in this one, so that would potentially be another resource allocation that we'd have to do in the future, or that would all be rolled up into their current.
Correct.
They would develop that at no additional cost to the to the city.
Correct, that would be a part of what-
Their technical assistance that they're providing through this.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
It's the annual fee for their technical assistance for the whole year. I'm sorry. Correct.
Thank you. President Williams?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for explaining that. Some of my questions were answered by the councilmembers, but I have three cost proposals here, so one is not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred, and I have another cost proposal that hourly rate of one thirty-five an hour costs us not to exceed seventy-two thousand. Then we have, and I understand that you said it was included in the HUD, and then another one that has not to exceed an amount of forty thousand. So what specifically are these cost proposals? What would they take care of?
So the total, all three of them, the seventy-two thousand would be for the HUD technical assistance for home, CDBG, and ESG. The cost not to exceed forty thousand is specifically for the lead environmental reviews for the tier twos, which are required on each of the projects for our lead and healthy home projects, and then the twenty-two thousand five hundred is for the emergency demolition environmental reviews.
So where is that, what does that total each year? So what have we paid them in the last two years? What is the total expense that we accounted with?
Last year's total was a hundred and seventy thousand, and then this year's would be one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred.
So have we put out different RFPs for this particular service?
We have not. I cannot answer it.
So we just what would this particular, because we have it for the last two years, although we have problems, so we'll stay with this company, not put an RFP out for other proposals?
So initially, yes, they were HUD assigned, but yes, no RFPs were put out for any others.
Additional questions, Ms. Bowers?
Okay, thank you. I don't have any additional questions, no other questions or comments from my colleagues, so I'd ask that Resolution 68 of 2021, we move to our legislative session agenda for a vote. This concludes the work of the Building and Housing Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Now move on to public comment. I would like to come to the mic at this time to address the council, please do so, and I'll start with my right. Please come to the mic. Hey, anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Someone wants to talk about the work session? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. That's okay, we have time. Better sit down, go ahead and sit down, go ahead and sit down.
I can stand here.
Okay.
All right, my name's Mine Supran, and I have some questions for the city, and I'm not quite sure you can help us, but we're gonna try. You can see these young people here, whoever here, or for Capital Area Transit, or have or had. When I worked there, I was a mid-management supervisor management. Our motto, we should get the people home, you get the people to work. Now, I know there was money allocated from the federal government down through the whole United States to help transit. I don't see that happening for our city, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to any of you, I'm wondering where those budgets came from, where they're being allocated to, who is responsible for getting them out? And I wish that it would be a question that you could answer for me, as well as all the people in this general area. I love this city. I spent seventeen years in that company, helping people getting to work, getting to where they needed to be. Made a lot of friends, and I enjoy it. It hurts me when I have my drivers, and they're still my babies, they're still my drivers, call me and say, they're not going overtime, they're not getting the people home, we weren't even asked, and they're canceling things. The people aren't getting to work, they're not getting to the doctors, they're not getting home from work, they're not getting their kids at daycare, these are the things that breaks my heart. I don't want to see that. They're supposed to take care of Dolph and Cumberland, New York. It's not being done. I don't know what you can do if there's means that they have to answer to this city, council, I do believe they do.
Yes, they do. We give them, we give them enormous amount of money, Capital Area Transit.
Thank you. So for my heart, I hope that you'll have someone check into this, and please, I'm going to say this, it's not very polite, probably not political, correct, okay? But I think they're scamming our people. I'm sorry, but I do. I think they're giving them a bunch of monarchy, that they're not telling the truth, I've seen it, lied to by the person that's in charge of that right now, and it hurt me greatly to entrust in someone and tell them, oh, yeah, he's a pretty good guy, he'll work out worse, and now he does backstab people, hurt people immensely, and really ruined that company.
Have board representatives, I'll make sure that I get contact to wish your concerns. If you would need your name and address and number with your signature.
It's on the sheet, man, where I signed up.
Okay, Minea Brandt, and I'll get back with you.
I appreciate that very much.
My name is Chris Allen, private. I have some concerns. It's a lot of discrimination going on at CAT. There's about four employees that file PHRC complaints, cancellations every day, like minus one. No need for it, we have an employee, Mary Kane, who's terminated while on doctor's care. There's a whole lot of mismanagement going on, and someone can look into this new management?
Um, how about if we set up a meeting, myself, Friday, sometime Friday, because I need to hear your concerns. I mean, anyone who wants to come, please come down to my office here, on the third floor, located on the third floor.
Tomorrow, is it?
No, Friday, Friday. Anytime after one, is that good? Want to say one-thirty?
One-thirty.
In the meantime, I will look into this now. I have an opportunity to talk to our Capital Area Transit Board members, who serve on the board for us, and then I can hear a list of your concerns.
Yes, it's a lot going on that needs to be looked into.
I certainly will do that.
Thank you.
Pardon me? You most certainly can. I I don't know if we can hear you, though, and we want you to identify yourself and your address, please.
Mark Works.
Okay.
I hear a lot of things, even my wife's a Westboro. I hear a lot, but my mind works around this place. When you're here at the building of something, what really happens? Because I've been in Harrisburg, and I see how this, don't even have to be built, I don't have to fix it, it just needs to be pulled up and out, and it starts fresh. That's how you get it in DC, all the projects, gone, down there, four-story buildings, three hundred thousand dollars, right? Not even my wife, I want her to stay in her part, too, of what you think, that if you if you're not talking, but if you don't see the results, it just seem like as if, hello people, pay your taxes, and shut up.
Well, this is the first time I'm hearing about anything occurring at the Capital Area Transit.
I'm only speaking out loud.
Bus service, okay, okay, and I would certainly, I would certainly take the opportunity to meet with the CAT employees, and I will let them address the concerns and correspond with your far down there.
I'm just, I'm just a citizen.
Oh, that's fine.
I don't do much talking to this town, so like I'm saying, on North Street where I'm at, a lot of children play, and it should be a one-way street for the situation. Nobody, never come on the hill, I I'd like to be the person to do the drive-by, not a drive-by trouble, but a drive-by given you, but I think one-way streets should be, houses should be demo, they're burned by the house is burned up. I try to do the best I can with mine, right? But they have houses around that nobody's doing anything with. Yet, when people come out of the city and want to move in, they say, I cannot come from New York, a million-dollar house, come to the same size house, but only live in a thirty-nine thousand dollar house, which is worse. This city is never going to grow. You got big warehouses going up, shit.
This city will grow. This city will grow.
No, you know, I know, I I want to see it.
We'll see it grow. We'll revitalize the city. You're gonna be, many as you want can attend the meeting, I will listen to all of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, if it's, there's another time, it's more appropriate for you, I can also meet you. Just give me the time, end of day.
I'm expecting the staff to be here, thank you, as well.
Okay, I'll make myself available for you, if you, you know, whatever day that you can you choose, and I know that I'm available Friday, I have a commitment on Thursday.
So earlier in the day will be better for me, like, from ten or twelve.
Give the city clerk your your information, okay? And I'll get in touch with you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Crystal Davis, Regina Street. I wanted to thank you for talking about making it Fifteenth Street one-way, because the little girl got killed that. Another thing that's on my heart this evening is the citizens who got shot out in Homiea, South Side, including an eight-year-old little girl. I continue to be concerned about the random shooting in the city. I too have had a bullet, stray bullet, come into my home and land on the floor. So I'm hoping that going forward, we can do something about random gun shooting, but please haven't been able to catch perpetrators, and I'm just here to express my concern. We need to figure out how to get these perpetrators off of the street, so our children don't get killed. Thank you. Do you want to speak with it, for you?
I understand your frustration. I'm frustrated as well, I wasn't here when the incident occurred. I just had an opportunity to see you to talk with Commissioner Carter. There are plans in place to address the shootings that are happening in the City of Harrisburg. Also, you will be hearing from him within upcoming two days. He will be doing a press conference to address some of the shootings and killings.
Thank you.
But I'm not at liberty to tell you the extent of what has happened and what the outcome was at this point, but I can really just assure you that we are taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Precious. Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening, council. Ms. Parsons, Holly Street. I would just like to respond to what the folks from Capital Area Transit have said. While for some of you it might be the first time you're hearing about this, if you don't ride the bus, you don't know, and I've been hearing this for some time about folks being stranded at Walmart or at Giant or other places and not being able to get home. Also increased use of Lyft and Uber because, which costs more money, because they cannot rely on the bus getting them to work on time. And one of the problems that I see is that people who serve on the CAT Transit Board do not use the service, and it is one of the questions that I have raised in the past when people have come up to be appointed or reappointed. I think one of the questions that council needs to ask is where do people live and do they use the service? Because it's very easy to sit on a board and make decisions based upon finances and not at all, not be in touch at all with people who actually use the service, people who are riders and who depend on that because they do not own cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons, but keep, please keep in mind that the Capital Area Transit Board is made up of Gotham County, Harrisburg, as well. Okay, and Compton County. Okay, thank you, and we have to approve the appointments from each of the different counties, so you may not get anyone who does ride the bus because they may not live in the City of Harrisburg, but I can assure you that I will be in conversation with our Capital Area Transit Board members from the City of Harrisburg, and we'll be talking to them concerning the concerns about the CAT bus drivers.
Yes, ma'am.
As well as, she says she was a, what?
She was dispatch.
A dispatcher, okay.
Yeah, I just want to bring up, past summer, CAT usually provides service to kids that work at Hershey.
Right.
In fact, they gave a bus-
Like they gave the bus, Hershey put money in it, and also CAT, two of these kids that were Hershey. They didn't do it this year. These kids had to catch a break for buses, weren't able to make it. Also, we believe in cutting costs. I'm standing for it, wants to get that. But when you got people get on buses and spit on buses on floors, never been touched or cleaned, that's what goes on. It's unhealthy for the droughts and the passions also. Buses aren't being cleaned internally. They only wash them once a week. And that's it. So in other words, no clean, because he's trying to save money, I understand that, but it's costing him. We don't want to hire people cleaning the buses, but our health is at risk. So it's a lot more, you know? In other words, he's on one side of the wall and the board is on the other. They know he's trying to save money, which I don't have no problem with someone trying to save money. But you gotta look at the welfare of your drivers too.
Sure, of course. So you only have one person, I thought, um, young lady, young lady named Ross.
Ross.
Ross, she's the only one who cleans?
And she can't do everything by herself, but he does want, but uh, back there.
Okay.
That's it, yeah. But anyways, it's more than I would like to say, but I know we have other things we have to do on. I did put my name on the list.
Thank you.
And I'd like to talk to.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. So anyone to my left? At this point, I will adjourn the work session for the Harrisburg City Council. Meeting's adjourned. We immediately will go into the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session of Tuesday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. I am now calling this meeting to order at seven twenty-five, and I apologize for the lateness. Mr. Petrowski, please do the rec, uh, please put on the record for the road call.
Mr. Allen, President. Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madison. Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, and Mr. Madison is excused from the legislative session as well. We now will move on to the indication, Mr. Majors.
Uh, thank you, President Williams. Uh, everyone, please bow their head in a moment of silence. Want to, uh, think of all of the victims of gun violence in our city and uh, tragic accidents that we've had occur in the city. We're also want to ensure that we are, uh, as we are looking at the weather changing, we are thinking about our homeless ways to ensure that they uh, provide services to them through, uh, with, has the potential of being a very cold winter season. So that way, please have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, and now move on to federal agents, Ms. Bowers. I still want to trip. All right, okay. We now move on to communications we have Monday this evening. And we move on to courtesy of the floor. I will now open the meeting up for anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the legislative session, any items on the legislative session. I'll start to my right again. Please come to the mic at this time. And I'll go to, uh, my middle. But thank you, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the eighteen-hundred block of State Street. This evening, I'm going to start off on a positive note. I'd like to thank you for getting that road at White Hall and Eighteenth Hatch. I would also like to thank Mr. Majors for bringing up that elderly people and other people are not always attached to iPhones when it comes to paying for parking. The lady that spoke here earlier, and she came this evening, she had to ask me how get money in her meter. She had a debit card. I told her, I don't play that game. It either takes money or I don't put anything in at all. And when we're looking at these meters, a lot of times when you go with credit cards, they have this little gang call, you've got to put a minimum of four dollars in. Whether you're only there for fifteen minutes or a half an hour. I'm not into giving three hundred percent tips on parking. Under the old meter system, we were allowed, if we put extra money in, somebody could come in and use our extra money. Now, under this new system, that does not happen. So I am saying, go ahead with your contract, but make sure that it doesn't get rid of our option to use quarters to pay for parking. I'd like to also thank, uh, the young man that was in charge of the comprehensive plan for acknowledging that a good job was not done with getting this information to the public. And part of the problem, and I've mentioned this before, is uh, depend upon Channel Twenty. Channel Twenty isn't open to everyone because of how they, if their TV, whether they get it from Dish or whether they get these streaming things in, they're not getting the information. The other problem is, not just because of the mask, but that's a problem with listening to Channel Twenty for us who can't get Channel Twenty. Because the system now, it's cracking up. We're not being able to hear what's going on. Plus, some of the people who speak are not speaking directly into the mics. So it's a waste of time when you're trying to hear what's going on. And it doesn't, uh, we are not able to understand it for those who are at home. The other thing I want to talk about was this Vision Zero. We've had, uh, we talked about the consultants. And I felt that they were, they were patting themselves on the back for some of the work that had been done in the past. I don't think they should have because I don't believe enough of the community knew what was going on. And I live, as you, as I mentioned, I live in the eighteen-hundred block of State Street. Up at Nineteenth and State. That has been an area where we have had a lot of accidents. We have asked and pleaded for something to be done because we don't have any enforcement of the laws that are on the books. People park up against the corners, people park at stop signs with the ones, for the few stop signs we have. People are not, um, they're parking in front of, um, meters. Now, I understand when it comes to police enforcement downtown, people are paying extra for some of that. But when I talk to my friends who live uptown, they complain about enforcement of parking because they're getting tickets. Where I live, people park illegally all the time. It is difficult to get out on Two State Street. Uh, and we can, and when I called to get someone to encourage these people not to park there, understand, I don't want people to get tickets. I would like to see some yellow paint on these curbs. I would like to see some of those, um, sidewalk, uh, those triangle-type things parked so uh, people will not park in these areas. I appreciate the fact that the city did hire more parking enforcement people, and they're doing a much better job with street cleaning, but for other illegal parking up in the Allison Hill area, it does not exist. We are having a problem, and I spoke to the officer that was here earlier, about all of the tractor trailers that are being parked up in the Nineteenth and Twenty-Hundred block of State Street. The one that bothers me most is the tractor trailer that parks up in the Twenty-Hundred block right as you get ready to turn, like you're going into Pembroke, where there's no sidewalk. People are already walking in the street, and now we have to walk past um, these tractor trailers. That's not acceptable. And I'm hoping that the budget comes next time. Hopefully, there'll be a little bit more money for additional parking enforcement people that can do something other than um, parking for, um, street cleaning. And up at Nineteenth and State, I want to mention, in addition to the, the number of accidents we have had up there, we also have a lot of people walking, so that, and a lot of traffic going across State Street. We, that is also a popular path for those motorbikes. We need a traffic light there. I know no one wants to put a traffic light because that's going to inconvenience the people leaving the city or coming into the city because that would be three traffic lights in a row, Seventeenth, Eighteenth, and Nineteenth. But either you've got to enforce illegal parking so people can see to go in and out of State Street. And the other issue that we have on Allison Hill, we have too many two-way streets that should be one-way. Parking on sidewalks and curbs is becoming an everyday issue on Allison Hill. And I asked Mr. Martin to stay because I wanted him to hear this. I know he can't do everything. What he does, he does well, but he can't do everything. And we need a study for Allison Hill and look at some of these streets and determine whether they should remain two-way streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, and we are going to do that. We are going to look at every street in the city of Harrisburg that's two-way. And it has, uh, parking on both sides. Uh, as the answer to your tractor trailer, I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned that there's tractor trailer parking at Nineteenth Street and Twentieth Street. I just today received a copy of a letter from a truck towing company that will be able to tow tractor trailers. Okay, so we are addressing the tractor trailer. We do have a problem on the nineteen-hundred block of Dairy Street as well, as well as the Fourteenth or Fifteen-hundred block of Dairy Street with tractor trailers. So we are trying to address those problems. But we just had a letter, I just received a letter today from a company that will be able to tow tractor trailers for us.
Okay, and the city is also doing a little better when cutting the grass on Walnut Street. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Ms. Parsons. Um, I'd also like to mention some issues about parking on Holly Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth, and then the block of Eighteenth Street between Eighteenth and Mulberry or Chestnut. So it depends on the day. Um, there are numerous auto repair shops there. There are cars everywhere, all the time. Both sides of the street on Holly Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth are parked full. Can be very difficult if you're trying to get out of Holly Street or into Holly Street. Um, there are cars parked on the sidewalk, there are cars parked perpendicular to the sidewalk, cars up on the sidewalk at an angle, cars stopped in the middle of the road. This has been an issue there for quite some time, along with the abandoned cars. But recently, it's become more of an issue because children are walking to school through that neighborhood, and they cannot walk on the sidewalks. They have to walk in the street, which is also very dangerous because we have people who like to motor down that street and screech tires and do uh, similar things. I thought that if you owned an auto repair shop in the city, that at night, all the cars that you were working on needed to be off the street and either in the garage or behind a fence. That never happens there. There's also auto repair shops between, um, it's a small street that runs between Holly and Dairy. And all of those are creating more abandoned cars. There, there was a truck, a huge truck full of trash that sat on Holly Street for months. I see now that it has the orange, this is an abandoned vehicle. So not only did we get the abandoned vehicle, but we had the abandoned vehicle full of trash. And this is really an issue throughout Allison Hill, and I I have to support the previous speaker. The other thing that we have on Holly Street, because so many people park up on the sidewalk, is there are now deep grooves between where the street and the, and the curb. Some of them are as deep as a foot. Like if you were walking at night, it, you, you could break an ankle. Um, the alley, El, Ellsworth Street and the alley that runs up along Joshua Farm is deeply, deeply rudded. Uh, there are often cars double-parked there as well. Um, there's a couple of abandoned cars back there. Uh, th- this is something that really needs to be addressed on the hill in a way, in the same ways that's addressed in other parts of the city. Thank you.
Ms. Parsons, if we know about it, we certainly will address it. Now that you brought it to our attention, I certainly will make sure I get that information to the right person.
Okay. I have a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? To my left? Thank you. We now move on to approval minutes. Approval minutes for the legislative ses- session of September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Council members, any permissions, additions, or corrections? Hearing done, the minutes will stand approved. We now move on to reports committees. Report from Chair Allen on the work session of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. I'll be brief since it just happened. Not that long ago. Um, up for discussion was, uh, Resolution, um, sixty-nine, a resolution for the fifth proposed budget reallocation. Uh, key components of that included, um, over five million dollars coming from the estimate cash carryover and moving into various essential places due to VG funding, um, tree maintenance. Pollers, also the information going to our debt resservice payment for AMBAK, send the state for that. Um, right, rightly accounting for, um, approval and traffic engineering for, uh, capital items. And then also public safety office equipment for, uh, the new offices that they need for the, the new hires that they've had. Um, one of the key points I think I want to reiterate is this is by we do budget reallocations and see what's coming in and out of accounts and understanding the impact to the general fund on that. Um, up for discussion also was, uh, Resolution, pardon me, seventy-three, which is a memorandum of understanding to uh, work with Impact Harrisburg provide, uh, funds for the Neighborhood Business Stabilization Program grants, the amount of one-point-three million dollars. We have placed this on hold, uh, because we need further information from the administration of where this will be allocated from and the impact to the general fund. Um, so this comes with a, um, request from the administration to come back with some more information and/or a budget reallocation and discussion on that impact. Um, that concludes my committee notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move on to report from Chair Bowers on the work session of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome.
On Tuesday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, the Building and Housing Committee met to discuss Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Civitas LLC for the purpose of providing professional services to the city's Department of Building, Housing, and Development, including but not limited to technical assistance and general consulting services for general technical assistance, lead tier-two site-specific environmental review, and environmental review for emergency demolition. Ms. Denise Hill, interim director of the Department of Building and Housing Development, Mr. Otto Banks, director of the Bureau of Economic Development, were present on behalf of the administration. The agreement includes but is not limited to technical assistance and general consulting services. Again, for general technical assistance, lead tier-two site-specific environmental review and environmental review for emergency demolition. The term of the contract is through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Council members asked questions about the length of the contract, the length of the contracting with Civitas LLC, an evaluation of contractors, and the policy manual requested. Ms. Hill shared that the city of Harrisburg has been contracting with Civitas LLC for two years. Civitas LLC has been helpful over the last two years in improving the city's status with HUD. Ms. Hill also shared the programs that are included within the technical assistance and general consulting services. So the maximum funding for each area is seventy-two thousand dollars for general technical assistance, which includes home investment partnership programs and emergency solutions grant programs, or ESG. Forty thousand for lead tier-two site-specific environmental review and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for emergency demolition environmental reviews. Mr. Banks shared that a request has been made to create a policy manual to improve standard operating procedures within the department. I would ask that my colleagues uh support Resolution sixty-eight twenty of two thousand twenty-one as the Department of Building and Housing Development continues to improve with hope.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We now will move on to ordinance for first reading. We have none. And we move on to ordinance for amendment. We have none as well. We now move on to ordinance for final passage. And before we do that, I need a motion to reconsider. And please keep in mind that in reconsidering this motion, that it's a vote to reconsider the street vacation. So do I have a motion to reconsider Bill ten of two thousand twenty-one? I have a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski, please read Bill ten, two thousand twenty-one.
Uh Bill ten of two thousand twenty-one is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg. Mercer Street, Goodyear Street, and Filson Street within the block bounded by Berry Hill Street, South Twenty-third Street, Brookwood Street, and South Twenty-second Street pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the classified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
This time can I have a motion to suspend the review? Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Council members, I know there's additional questions. And tonight we have Mr. John Joffe here to address those questions. Could you please come to the front, Mr. Joffe? Mr. Grover, you want to assist?
No, you're good.
Okay. Okay, council members, I'll start to my right. Ms. Bowers, do you have any questions regarding Bill ten, two thousand twenty-one?
No, thank you.
Thank you. You screen me.
Um not too many questions, just can you give us an overview? Um I know we spoke before about the project. But you just give the public an overview of the project, where it's at and what like? I guess what's taken so long?
Sure, um we first in front of you guys, I think it was twenty thirteen, so it was quite a while ago. Um project's delayed various reasons. I came back in front of you guys, sort of down here, it's probably, I think it was May of last year, uh where we asked for a two-year extension on that, which you guys granted. I'm not sure if all of you were still on the board at that time, but we asked for that. Uh part of that extension, um as part of our plan, which is recorded, we already had this plan recorded at the courthouse, it was already approved uh prior to that. Uh when we did do the extension here, we amended the project. The project was for one hundred and seventy-one market rate units. Um at the time, we got the extension, that project was scaled back. Uh we met with staff uh with a couple of meetings. Uh we decided internally that we thought it would be a better project with a couple less units. Uh we knocked it back from one hundred and seventy-one, I believe it's one hundred and forty-four today uh is what was extended on. Um there are a couple of other minor technical issues uh to work through with city staff that we were working through. One of the issues that we need to do as part of that approved plan, it was contemplated that uh the streets would be vacated. Uh we had done that prior with getting neighbors to sign off. City staff said, can you refresh that list of uh folks that want the streets vacated? So we went back around again. My brother, who's here, I guess a week ago, actually went around and did that. Uh talked to all the neighbors that were home. I think he did that over the course of a couple of weeks to talk to most of the uh constituencies that would have been in that neighborhood. Um biggest uh biggest things that they had to say were, when are you guys building? The buses are too loud, and I thought I owned the street already. Um but we got the signatures we needed, presented them back here to council. Uh I guess we weren't here at the last uh last meeting, but we were here at the prior one. Um I told you guys had some additional questions, what the what the project is, and happy to answer anything you have.
Could you please be uh closer to the mic? Get your answers to the question.
Sure.
Yes, it's pretty nice.
Um just, is this your first project in the city or have you done other projects in the city?
Yeah, we've done plenty of stuff in the city. Uh we've done a number of apartment projects. We've done stuff outside of the city. We've built single-family homes. We've done a lot of work.
All right.
Is this, is the red button mean it's on?
Yeah.
Does, yeah, or pull it. Slide over. I'll just plug.
Is it green or red?
Red.
It's red, it's on.
Yeah, we've done various projects. I can hear you. Um here we've done various projects throughout the city. We own apartments in the city. We also have apartments in other locations, we have stuff in New York. We've done single-family homes also throughout Pennsylvania.
All right, and just last question, um uh you noted that there are market rate housing. Uh with us having passed an affordable housing legislation um recently, is that something that you looked into to be able to provide some affordable housing units within that complex?
Oh, within this complex, it's already, it's an approved, it's an approved job. So it was already done years ago. Uh so at this one, it is all market rate projects. Um we typically don't do affordable housing units just because it's a different financing mechanism that does it. So we usually go to your typical banks and just get normal commercial loans to do things. A lot of times, if you have affordable units, you need to get some sort of subsidized financing uh some sort of help. So it's almost a different business model, be able to to do what I think you're you're referring to as affordable housing.
Uh uh from the number of units you have, I don't think it'll be a ton of units that would need to be affordable. I believe that's something you should look into uh because it's something we highly encourage um with new with new development in the city. Although I know you've been around um with this plan for a number of years now. Was it just coming to fruition in the recent times? I think that I I know that's something that should be considered or is looked into, even though the financing is technically already approved for this project for on your end. Um that is something that we would like to see, or at least I would like to see taken into consideration for my support. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, just to to add to that, to this project, there's different, because we did buy this a while ago, I think we're going to come in more competitively. Like it won't be subsidized, but our rates should be about fifteen percent or twenty percent less than probably elsewhere that you'd be seeing in midtown. We've had some pretty significant rent inflation. That's one of the reasons we like this project. We think we're going to be successful, so.
All right, so um I guess since you brought it up, um you've already done your business plan, ran your numbers and everything. What are the the rates for the units? I know you would know that.
Uh we're usually somewhere around, trying to think, we have six hundred, probably nine hundred. Nine hundred bucks, about nine hundred to a thousand. It depends on what the unit is, what the sizes are, and that's subject to change based on what the market conditions are. It fluctuates. And by the time this is finished, the timeline here, if we start, you know, today we'll be renting apartments, you know, nine months, maybe even a year out just because of the slight work and actual vertical construction on apartment buildings.
So you don't know exactly how much you'd be renting uh one bare room apartment for?
It'd be somewhere around nine hundred, rip them off by a few hundred dollars. I don't want to have anything on the public record that.
All right, that's the only question I have, questions.
Mr. Allen.
I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mengers.
Thank you. Um so again, I think part of the concern is is trying to, you know, pin down what a a cost is. And I guess in terms of affordable, um again, we're not talking subsidized. You know, there's, everybody defines affordable a little bit different. So how are you, how how do you define affordable? And um yeah, how do you define affordable, sorry there?
Sure, I mean, this project, like I said, to give you a basis for this, the plans for this are already drawn. This was approved prior. Uh affordability, I mean, it's a function of what we need to do to get the project to work also. So I mean, when you underwrite a project like this and it's private financing, the affordability of it is, you know, it's contingent upon what you can do to get that project financed. So, you know, we can't subsidize rent, so the bank's not going to let us build it, right? So there's considerations of getting the project actually penciled financially to even get it built. As far as affordability is concerned, we need to get it filled up. And we need to put it in a price point that people can afford that's livable so that our project is full and our project is successful. That's one of the things that we want to do. We think nine hundred dollars is relatively on the lower side of what rents are here currently in Harrisburg, especially for a new construction project, that would be very nice.
Okay, and then in terms of how you look at your market, is that number for the Harrisburg market that you're looking at? Because I know the MSA for our area, in terms of what is deemed the Harrisburg market, ranges from, you know, from Carlisle through Lancaster, right? So, you know, and we have, we see a a vast variety and um in the wages that folks make versus uh the the residents of Harrisburg. So is that when you're talking to the market, is that the average cost of your your units that you rent in the city of Harrisburg? Or is that where you're looking at the market in terms of what is happening in that statistical MSA uh category?
Sure, great question. So we do operate stuff in the city and part of that metric that I just gave you is predicated on what we get in in other places. Like I said, we have seen some rents inflate there. It's one of the reasons we like this project. Uh but it's, that's Harrisburg City. So you have, you have some disparate rents and there's different pockets of income and everything else. It's more of a, you can't generalize in that big of demographics. So we think we're going to get a lot of people, Harrisburg residents there, or people that that are just outside the city.
Okay.
Democratic demographic.
And then um this one question that I know some of us have heard from other residents is in terms of of parking. How was, how was that going to be set up uh in that land development plan? And I know, you said initially, you know, you had approval back in twenty thirteen. That preceded many of our time on on this board. I can speak for myself, I I haven't started, I started serving officially in twenty sixteen. So uh how is the parking uh situation addressing that area? Because I do remember hearing from some residents before about their concern what uh additional units would do to parking in in that area.
Sure, that's one of the reasons that when we came back here, like I said, this is now, I guess a year ago, most when we came back here to re-present the plan. That's one of the things that we assessed internally and also with staff, that that lowering the number of units there was going to help with some of that uh with the parking situation. So before, we were actually parked and when we got this thing entitled or approved the first time through planning and everything else, that was all vetted and audited, uh you know, a hundred, we had a hundred and seventy-one units. Uh the building footprints are identical. The number of units is now a hundred and forty-four. So the the impact of parking, in theory, we should have an extra, whatever that that math is there. So we have an extra thirty, thirty-seven parking space. I think it was, I'm going off of memory now, I think it was parked at one, it is one point two to one and it'd be higher than that now. I can get that information for you if you want it. But we think there's plenty of parking based on our experience and and our review with city staff.
Okay, and then um I said, just because, and this is all me, I just don't have uh the the bill in front of me at the current time. So in terms of the residents that you polled in this second uh refresh, uh approximately how many folks have you heard from? Were you hearing from residents or some of the other um? I guess uh I say residents and or the property owners, you're hearing directly from residents. I know there there are some other um residents in in that vicinity.
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of secondhand news because I didn't do that personally. My brother did it. Um from what he told me, you had some of the uh the commercial guys, because you're looking at, when you do the street vacations, it's who the actual owners are on the other side. So you have to get a certain percentage of them to sign off. So the biggest landowners, you need to get those signatures. Then there's uh the doors you knock on, obviously, it's harder to track down single people than not. Um but I believe the majority, I think there's one. One was a renter and then we'd be getting in touch with the property owner. But uh generally, I think everyone was pretty positive.
Okay, yeah, and and like I said, so you're still, you're still hitting your number with the reduction in the unit. So, you know, I think with one seventy-one, I don't know what your your breakdown in terms of being able to get the ROI and ensure everything that's um done, but you're still hitting that number. Again, I think one of the concerns that you're you're hearing from all of us, particularly when it comes to affordable housing, is we are seeing um we're seeing an increase in rent in our in our community. And we want to ensure that residents have an opportunity to uh live in some of these newer units that are going up. I think market rate, um like I said, it's 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 always a it it's a, it's a moving target, right? Uh and what we want to ensure is that our residents who uh we have, we we deal with affordable housing, the housing crisis in our city on a regular basis is, and we don't want to see, you know, new units go into our community, particularly uh in the Melrose Garden, Allison Hill area, where we don't see a lot of new construction going on and then folks in that area not being able to to afford to live there. I think nine hundred for a one-bedroom uh in Harrisburg seems a a little high because that's not included in the utilities, correct? So the second you add, you know, your water um or a light bill, gas, you know, and these torches, any type of service or internet, you're now, I mean, you're well exceeding the thousand dollars per for for rent. And that's just with those few basic things. That's not anything taken into account, any uh your your food or any other expenses that, you know, our residents have. So that's where some of um the concern is coming from us um in terms of that. So um I don't know if I have any, I don't know if there was a too much of a question there, but I think that's one of the things that we got to take into account when we're looking at uh building new housing in in that neighborhood. I know there hasn't been a lot of new projects over there. I don't live too far from that area. So it's a, you know, a lot there, but we want to ensure that our residents um have access to uh these units if they are um going to move forward.
And that, yeah, thank you very much for that comment. And that's one of the things that, as I said, we're we're aspiring to do. We did buy the property, you know, some time ago. Um one of the issues you're seeing, one of the reasons you're you're breaching one of those, the affordability thresholds that you're talking about, is the cost of construction has gone from the roof. So if you've looked at a chart of lumber prices, other material prices, everything else, if you're looking at any new units that are going up in Harrisburg right now, people that, you know, pro forma, you write out your financial model prior to construction, as you're going through that construction, people's costs are going right through the roof. Now, you know, as a corollary to that, you have costs going up. And what you hope is that some of the wages catch up, which is another issue because you want to have people that are making more money and can actually afford this stuff. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty difficult uh difficult thing to do. But I think on this one, I think we're, we should be okay here just because of where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm done. Yes, President Williams.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Um do you have a question, I remember it? Um the breakdown of the apartment units in terms of the deals, one of the rooms?
Um, yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I think it was somewhere around, it's majority one-bedroom. It's might be eighty, twenty, once again, I don't want to uh, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth here. So I do not know the actual, it's on my, it might be the back to it. But it is, it's majority one-bedroom.
And um and you already have?
No, we don't have the finances secured, but we have banks that we've talked to. So we have the, the buildings are designed with the banks that we've talked to that have, it it's, it's in the process of funding.
So then, and where your idea regarding their verbal deals? Because I imagine most of this information gathered before the pandemic. This is the project that's ongoing for very long. So um when you kind of estimated the points of rent for those based on pre-pandemic data or?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you just mentioned the pandemic did increase the cost of production, construction. So so that that nine hundred, right, you're talking about?
Okay.
Is that based on pre-pandemic information or during pandemic?
Sure, that's why I didn't want to commit myself to saying, hey, we're going to charge nine hundred dollars. Because one of the things that we have to do is we're going to get the buildings done and cost everything out. Because one of the things that we have to do is we're going to get the buildings done and cost everything out. We have an idea of what everything is. And you want to make sure that you hit some sort of affordability metrics, you can rent out the units. So the pandemic has increased, it's increased costs of everything. Like I said, on, on the other side, we like to think it's increased wages as well, right? Um, and you try and, and, and find something where you can actually rent apartments. It doesn't do us any good to rent apartments that nobody can afford, right? Because you can't actually rent them. So we have to find a, a, a spot there that's, that's actually affordable. And, and what happens if the cost goes up too high and we actually cost these out before we go to build them? The project's unbuildable, the bank won't let you. So they say, okay, your rents need to be fifteen hundred dollars in the building. You know, and we can't get that and the market doesn't support it, we won't get the money. If the cost of the building is X and the bank says, you know, your costs come in higher than that, the bank's not going to give you the money to build it. So we're at the tail end of finalizing what those numbers are, but we believe that it works because we're.
And, um, of your, of your existing, uh, of the existing properties, properties you have, uh, about what percentage would you say are weekly rentals versus monthly rentals versus your leases?
Uh, it's a complicated question, there's various ownership structures, but we have probably, the majority of them are apartments and we probably have a hundred, a hundred and fifty of them might be, uh, weeklys. I don't actually know the answer to that off the top of my head. And there's various investors I know, different pieces of everything. It's not a, then there's a management company on top of it.
I, I said, I don't understand your answer. You might be elaborating.
Uh, we're in different real estate partnerships, right? So when you do a real estate project, you can get capital or money from different people. So we've had rooming houses we've done, we've had apartments we've done. Uh, we own things that are outside of the city of Harrisburg. So inside the city of Harrisburg, stuff that I have personally and some ownership stake in is probably a hundred and fifty rooms. But of that, we have another, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred units maybe that might be, uh, you know, traditional apartments. There's stuff that we have that's outside of the city, so we have various properties.
So, I mean, I'm just thinking about this, so, so more about what's outside of the city, so.
See, I think it's three hundred, I think it's one fifty.
Okay, so you're saying one fifty are just rooms?
I think so.
And then the rest are apartments?
Correct.
Of the apartments, which ones, what percentage are on weekly rentals versus?
No, that's, that's the difference.
Okay, so if it's a.
Everything, if it's a, if it's a room or something, it's under the rooming house license that's issued by the city. So we don't operate anything that's not licensed through the city, that's a weekly rental. You can't rent, you can't rent an apartment weekly, I guess you can, but.
You can't, yeah, and that's why I'm asking.
Yes, we don't do that.
You, you don't rent apartments on a weekly basis?
If it's in a rooming house, it's on a weekly, uh, weekly system. If it's an apartment, it's an apartment.
Is that all Ms. Daniels?
Yeah.
Okay. So now, um, fresh my memory too, because are these apartments or are these rooming houses?
No, these are apartments.
Oh.
These are just normal apartments.
Apartments, not room?
No, normal apartments.
Yes, I'm just concerned, are you affiliated with Skynet?
Yes.
Well, let me just say, I just really got a lot of negative comments today regarding your company. And I just wanted to make sure in affiliation, so we don't want this to become a boarding. So we want this to become apartments, units, and a rented. Or how are they going to be mollyfaming when they're one-bedroom apartments?
But so the Skynet stuff, as I said, we're happy to talk to anybody at any time. So we're happy, you have my brother's number.
I got quite a few calls regarding Skynet, nothing was positive. A little concerned about, little, no, wait a minute, okay. Little concerned about what quality of housing that you're going to build. I want a quality project, okay? Um, I'm just concerned about what you're going to have. At one instance, you said mollyfaming and then you, Ms. Daniels, she said she asked about weekly and monthly, you hear it. So I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm hearing, like, this is not going to be a boarding house. This is going to be apartments with one bedroom only.
And some two-bedroom.
Oh, some two-bedroom. Now, you said you've talked to quite a few people. Um, in this bill, I see only five residents that you talked to. Do you have another list of how many people that you talked to? Because on this paper here is five individuals and talked to two, uh, I think two union. Sure. Yeah, you talked to five residents on Adrian Street and I think Brookwood Commons LP, is that the apartment complex that leads to that?
No, that's us.
Oh, that's you. So you signed, where they're supposed to be getting signatures regarding residents in the city, right? Signed three times. I'm just concerned that a lot of residents in that particular area, like Mercer Street, um, Filson Street, that you're not aware of what you're going to do in Adrian Street. So do you have another listing of, of residents that you contacted to let them know that you're doing this development?
We had an original.
The impact of traffic? Pardon me?
Yeah, we had an original list, so we went around and said we've been at this for a while, so as people.
I know you've been at it for four or five years now. You've come here in front of us three times.
Correct, so as, as people have come and gone, there's different. I said, my brother went around door to door, whether some of those people were renters and they couldn't sign or what have you. Then also additionally, once you have enough signatures to meet the quota that the city needs, that's when you start getting the signatures, so.
Because of the five years, four years you've been coming back here, I don't have a complete list, but I only see five signatures for five residents on Adrian Street and I'm going to do all, um,
Non-resident, may I approach?
Sure, sure. You have something to add to this? Local union neighbors, okay.
John Ransky.
Okay, Mr. Ransky.
This is a good amount, shows who they, where they went to get the signatures.
So you gave me one, two more signatures, right? Brookwood Commons is you, are you? Local Union, same thing. So you gave me only two more, seven.
The idea was to approach residents whose properties apply to areas and streets that are.
Of course.
So, as John testified, Joshua did the labor, not Tom Phillips, with the idea that statute applies on the majority of the applying property owners to sign up for the petition. And some of those property owners were us.
Okay, so that's why you have the signature. I see that right now. I see where you're, okay. All right. Okay, I think that's all I have. Does anyone else have additional questions?
I do have a question.
Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. So I initially didn't have any questions regarding this, but just going through the line of questioning from my colleagues. So you were initially at a hundred and seventy-one units, but you've now decreased to a hundred and forty-four units. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
And you said it's, it will be a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, but no delineation of how many will be?
I don't have that information here.
Okay. So at a hundred and forty-four units with an estimation of nine hundred dollars a month in rent, under our affordable housing, uh, legislation that my colleagues mentioned that we passed earlier this year, twenty-nine of the units would be deemed affordable if you are interested in participating in the program. But I understand that this is years in the making, but I, I do think that, um, whatever you're offering, whether it's one-bedroom or two-bedroom, it still will be very much, uh, cost-burdened for our residents.
Nice. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. John.
Can I ask a question? What, I'm not familiar with that program. Maybe I'm just misunderstanding what it, what it is. What program did you ask and you'd like to move?
So we've passed a, an affordable housing legislative package that consists of four bills. So in the primary bill, Bill sixteen, um, it references, it establishes the program basically. So our minimum requirement is for twenty percent of any, uh, new development that will occur, uh, to be deemed affordable for our residents. So that's where I got the twenty-nine out of one hundred and forty-four.
I have a question. What, how do you, how do you define affordability in that statute?
There is a, I mean, we, it all has language in it, it's four companion bills and we could talk about that for hours. Um, we could, so.
But we utilize, I ca, can I answer just, I guess briefly with HUD guidelines? That's what we utilized for, um, income requirements within city.
So it's not a, it's not a set dollar figure, it's defined, there's probably a calculation based on.
There's a range within the, the chart, yes.
Do you have additional questions, council members?
Madam President, just so, because this has been going on for an awful long time. The council on May twenty-sixth to twenty-twenty granted the second extension to be completed. And one of the main conditions in it was to have the street vacation presented to council and approved, among other conditions. And, and I think the, from my view, the elephant in the room is the completion date's a hundred and sixty-nine days from today. It's not to start the project, it's to be done, the project. And I, I think it's a fair question to ask, is that real at this point to the city? I mean, a hundred and forty-four units where there's not financing arranged yet, through the winter construction months to get done by March thirty-first. And I'm not, this is not a criticism of the project. I, I mean, it's a question that's hanging in the air. And if you have to do some other extension, you know, we probably ought to be aware of it now, not aware of it somewhere down the road. Um, you know, I mean, that, that's, I'm just, you know, no, the city does not in the business of trying to approve projects that aren't going to go forward. They've approved this project, they've done the extension. We're now down to the street vacation that was required, uh, whatever that was eighteen months ago. And we're down to a hundred and sixty-nine days to be, to be done. And, and, um, it's my obligation to advise the council, you know, legally, where are we at the other side of this? And, uh, and that, I think it's the question you're going to get when your permanent applications are put into bill, you know? What, 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 what's the timeline now? Because, uh, the plan has been filed with the court under the extension grant. Uh, and we are now on a clock that seems from all practical purposes are doable. Um, and, and again, that's not a criticism, there's been a pandemic in between. But, you know, that is a practical discussion that has to happen.
Can you answer your question?
Sure, we can start without bank financing as long, as long as we're confident we're able to get the project to work. So we're, we're looking to do that. We tried to get on this agenda for a while to get a jumpstart on that. That being said, if we can get extra time, certainly we'll take it. Um, I said, I disagree with your position of finishing the project.
That's, that's the exact language, what it says. Exact language under the municipal plan and code and under what was approved is to be completed.
Substantial completion, right? I've done this in various other municipalities. Typically what happens is, once you get to a certain point of getting dirt moved and some of the roads going in, your project becomes vested and you're vested under the MNC. But that's, I mean, that's a legal, that's a legal thing for you and my attorney to talk about. I don't feel like talking about that here tonight unless you really want.
I'm just advising council of, of where, so there's not a misunderstanding of the public of where this is going.
So then I guess, if you don't mind, Council President, uh, I guess this would be a question directed towards, uh, the city solicitor or, 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 or planning bureau. Um, can you, can you repeat the language again about, uh, what needs, what, what needs to be met in these, uh, hundred and sixty-nine days, so a little over four?
The project is to be substantially completed, the hundred and forty-four unit project by March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, not commenced, not groundbroken.
And you said, what was the, the exact terminology, substantially completed?
Substantially completed, he's corrected that as the terminology. And I concede that is certainly open to interpretation what substantially completed means. But, you know, and this is for, I think, the planning people as opposed to my office, to get down to how they've treated this in the past.
Right.
But I'm, we, there's a real issue, I think, from every presentation here has been about what the clock is, the clock extending. Um, and, and, you know, I'm not sure, we're not going to be back again come spring, trying to deal with whatever came up in between. And I just think the council needs to know that.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I guess if, if you don't mind, Council President, can Mr. Knight potentially address that? Again, I think understanding, understanding where, I think we still understand some of the rules, so.
Can I just do a five-minute break? I'm doing a five.
No. Recession for five minutes.
We've got recess for five minutes. Okay, we'll go back in session. Um, Mr. Knight, I'd like to hear from you, please.
Um, yes, and what was, uh, good evening, council, uh, what was the specific question?
Yes, uh, yeah, no, sorry, I was trying to make sure, my train of thought here. Um, so it was with respect to, um, I guess how substantially completed would be defined in, in this instance, as we're talking about, uh, as we're still, this would be pertaining to the land development plan.
Yeah, uh, well, so that's a, I think, a very interesting question, I don't know, I've never answered, had to answer something like that. This is the first time I've ever addressed something where it's, you've got a potential future end date and what happens if the project is not one hundred percent complete by then? You know, so, I mean, I guess in, in my opinion, substantial completion would be site work and building envelope uh completed, walls, uh, roof, you know, floors, even if the individual units maybe aren't fully fit out with um drywall and uh various other finishes, um, but um, I think if we're talking about, yeah, substantial completion, word completion's in there. So it needs to be to a point where this project is one step away and a few, a little bit away from just occupancy. Um, so that would be my perspective.
Okay, and then I guess, that's, well, I guess my last question would be, are there any additional conditions that they had not met that would still need to be, maybe still need to be through this process and outside of what we're, outside of the street? And then there were still some, I remember there might have been some effects from some of the other entities.
Um, I think the main issue was, the other main issue was the stormwater management on site. Um, and I believe that they have gotten sign off from CRW uh for the plan. Um, and I know they had gotten, um, I think there had been original approvals for the stormwater management granted prior to um CRW uh adopting their new regulations, um, so I'm not sure whether the plan falls under that because those approvals would be tied to the land development plan from back then.
Okay.
I, I can say some stuff real quick, so, um, respectfully, I disagree with that interpretation, you have a land development plan, it's substantial completion of the land development plan is what's on the table, it's not the finishing of the buildings, it's the installation of the infrastructure. So that's, that's the substantial completion. Um, I think we can get that done by next May, so I don't think we need an extension.
So the issue is, it's March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, not May. You have a hundred and sixty-nine days, if I remember correctly.
Right, that's, I mean, that's, that's the issue, it's March thirty-first, it's, it's the end of the winter.
Right, so that's doing, so if you're talking about even substantial completion of infrastructure, we are at October twelfth and hitting the completion, even if you're talking about infrastructure by March thirty-first, you mentioned, uh, May thirty-first. Two months.
I mean, to, to continue on my point, though, we've been working with staff here since we came here even two years ago, and I think Jeff, hopefully can be a testament to this as well. Uh, if you want to give us an extension, I don't think we need it, I would like it because, uh, obviously, there are people here that think that'd be beneficial to us. So we're doing the, the market rate apartments here, we have a lot of time invested in this, a lot of money invested in it. Uh, we like the project, we think it's good for the neighborhood, we think it's good for the city, we've been trying to get this going for a long time. Uh, we've been here, you know, to a couple of different meetings, uh, these issues, we've talked about them a couple of times. I said, some of the board members are new, but even coming back to an I S here the years before, uh, just talking about some of these issues which hopefully have been receptive to. We're really at the tail end of this thing as far as the street vacations, which we've been trying to get in front of this board for, I don't know, when we, before the summer recess, I think. Um, so, uh, as I said, we, that's, that's kind of my position, if you guys like the project, we like to see the streets get vacated, we like to get started. If we have to come back to you for an extension, because that's what they want us to do, we can come back to you. If you're able to amend something tonight, you like the project, and you don't want to see us again, you give us another year, that'd be fantastic also, I don't think we need to.
Right, so, so, I, I, I think your, uh, your perception isn't that they're, I don't think anyone's asking you to, they're asking if you can get it done before March thirty-first, no one was saying that you needed additional time, they're asking what is a substantive and legitimate question, are you able to be complete by March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two? And the date you mentioned to me, sitting here, was May. Again, we're talking, you know, as we're talking about the affordable piece, if it was nine hundred pre-pandemic, you're already talking about support, you know, we already know, we, we all know, we're in the midst of a global pandemic, there are supply chain issues, if you're, if you turn the news on, you know that the, the cost of construction, construction costs are going up, the cost of lumber, the cost of materials, attempting to even do your own home repairs, the costs are twenty, forty percent and above what you would have paid pre-pandemic at Home Depot, those, et cetera, so I know that the folks that are dealing with that. Different, so again, you're talking nine hundred dollars, that means in not locking down number, probably means you're going to be a thousand dollars a month, close to, prior to any um utilities or, or services for individuals in that area, right? So again, question that was asked was, is March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two a legitimate date? Or will we approve this and then have to come before, you have to come before us again asking for another extension? So can it be completed by March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two? That was the substantive question and a legitimate question posed to you by our city solicitor in advice to this council.
By the definition that they gave, the answer is no. So if that's the definition that city staff uh and solicitor would like to hold us to, the answer is no, we cannot complete that date.
So substantial completion is actually defined in the municipal planning code as ninety percent of uh the value of the improvements based on the judgment of the city engineer. And that's not saying, as I understand it, all improvements are done, but it's, it is a big undertaking. To get to ninety percent of the financial value of improvements between now and March thirty-first. It's not simply the laying out of roads, it's not simply the foundations, it's more than that. And I'm just, that's the municipal planning code, that's not the city code. And, uh, and, you know, you work under it all the time, whether you're in Harrisburg or you're in other parts of the state. And sure, there's leeway, um, the city's zoning code, the city's comprehensive plan stuff, the city's affordable housing practice, all of those have radically changed since the time this project began. And the municipal planning code anticipates a five-year window to be, get to substantial completion, not to commence the project. And we're at year seven or eight now. I'm, I think, the, the, the council has supported your project all the way through, as I think is the administration. I, I'm just saying, you know, you, you're now really running where the legal requirements are different than when you started. And the further we go from the time that it was eventually applied to where we're on now, the further we are as what the current judgment of the council and administration is on how projects should be running. So that, there, it's a real issue for the city that we're running some projects under one set of rules and another set of projects under a different set of rules. So that's where the question is, is this, is this real, is March a real date? And, you know, the, the council has the right to know that question.
Sure, like I said, we're, we're prepared to start quickly and we'll get towards that date. But as I said, are we going to get to ninety percent by March thirty-first? I'd love to have you guys say, great, we'll give you another year, so if something happens, we're not coming back here to say, hey, we're halfway through the project. And city solicitor says, you know, I disagree with your interpretation of what that law is. And that's a really legal, esoteric thing to say, and I mean, that's the stance of the city, I'd like that resolved, because I like to work with people and, as I said.
It, I'm sorry, it's not, it's a direct thing, we have to make decisions and make judgment calls and we have to follow some guidelines so that we're fair and not arbitrary or capricious in the way in which we make those decisions.
That's not how I meant that to be interpreted, I meant.
Well, that's what you said, and one of the reasons we're here today is because you have come unprepared consistently for the last almost seventy years. And we've been given you a chance after chance after chance, and here we are, eh, towards the end of twenty-twenty-one, you still have no idea what you're actually going to end up with. And you want us to assume that you're going to get your act together by March, when you haven't been able to do it for almost seven years now. And you don't even come with humility with the plan to say, hey, I'm going to ask for an extension, it's, oh, you guys feel like I need an extension. Come to us with a plan, because if we're going to be bailing you out, we need to, you, you need to be able to come with several reasons why we should be bailing you out year after year after year.
Look, I'm sorry if that came across the way that you interpreted it, the way I interpreted what he was saying, where I think I have plenty of time, I would have come to ask you for time if I agreed with what he was saying, that's what I'm.
Are you an attorney? Are you licensed in Pennsylvania?
There's different attorneys.
Do you have a legal opinion from your attorney?
On that subject, I do, yes.
Well, then you should talk to your attorney.
But I'm saying, I don't want to talk to attorneys, I'd like to ask you guys if that's, I like to work with city municipalities.
Look, okay, that's it, that's it, I'm not going to go back, debate back and forth, um, I think all council members have made their intentions known. We are upset with the fact that you've come back several times, um, you're not answering the questions, uh, how they're putting the question to you, phrasing it, make it uh seem like, you know, okay, you have your act together, you don't. At this time, I'm just going to discontinue the back and forth, it's late. I am going to ask, uh, council members for a motion to go back into the business.
So moved.
In second, thank you, we're back into the business, we will now vote on res, on Bill ten.
Now, so, your vote will be on the motion.
Motion to reconsider, I'm sorry.
Well, I see.
It's, it's late, can I please? Okay, thank you, council members, for all of your input regarding Bill ten. And I know your frustration, you, you have to know, after all these years, we're frustrated, as Noah stated, we have different amendments and policies to our ordinance. So what you had seven years ago is not the same thing in place for the city in Harrisburg. What would we like to see as council members who cannot give us? So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Petrowski to call for the vote for Bill ten for motion to reconsider.
Just to clarify.
Do you have to read it back in?
To reconsider, it would be four votes, and then a vote, a motion again, or actually on Bill, so. Each requires four votes.
All right, calling the vote, uh, on Bill ten to reconsider the motion uh from the previous failed motion, um, at the last legislative session, Mr. Allen?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Mattson? Mr. Majors?
Oh.
Ms. Williams?
No. How many Bill ten? I don't have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Joffe, I'm sorry that we couldn't.
Sorry.
Project. We'd welcome you to come back to City Harrisburg to do any type of development you want to do. You do have a, a new director in place here as well. Director, uh, Mr. Banks, you can converse with him about any projects that you may want to do, and he may be able to assist you in future projects. Moving on to resolution, resolution sixty-eight to two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Petrowski, please be present to record.
Yeah, resolution sixty-eight of twenty-twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with CIC for the purpose of providing professional services to the city's Department of Building and Housing and Development, including but not limited to technical assistance and general consulting services for general technical assistance of lead tier-two site-specific environmental review and environmental review for emergency demolition.
Council members, any additional questions on resolution sixty-eight? I just have a statement of comment, I'm sorry. I know that we've been, uh, working with this particular company for two years, but we've had some, some problems in the last two years. Uh, I won't mention them, you and I know what they were, uh, but you're assured that we won't have that same situation this upcoming year with the, this time.
Yeah.
I would like to see this go on RFP, and consider other companies as well. This is only a year, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it. Um, and, and I'd like to see a report from them. Because if they've been doing it for two years, we certainly have some discrepancies in the last two years. So I'd like to see a report from them, if you can vote on this tonight, in the upcoming year, I'd like to see it for done. Mr. Petrowski, please call the vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Mattson? Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-eight passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution sixty-nine.
Resolution sixty-nine of twenty-twenty-one has amended, it's a resolution approving the fifth proposed twenty-twenty-one budget allocation.
Questions and comments, council members on resolution sixty-nine? Here now, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson? Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-nine passes.
Thank you. We will hold resolution seventy-three to the next work session, or legislative session, I'm sorry. Mr. Grover, will you make sure the administration gets the information we need to put this on the agenda?
I, I.
Also give us the information on the foundation, and since we didn't give it to you.
Or. I will make the request to the administration.
Okay. Moving on to resolution seventy-five, two thousand twenty-one.
The resolution, uh, seventy-five of twenty-twenty-one is a resolution to recognize the Warner Street corridor from Commonwealth Avenue to Front Street. Morris Chester Way.
Any questions or comments? Here now, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson? Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-five passes.
Moving on to resolution seventy-six.
Resolution seventy-six of twenty-twenty-one is a resolution confirming the inaugural appointment of Mr. Anthony W. Burnett to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
That would be placed in Public Safety Committee. And I move on to old business, council members, any old business? Moving on to new business, council members, any new business? Ms. Green, Ms. Bowers?
I had a comment, so if.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I prefer to address people directly to resolve a conflict, however, since this is the sixteenth city council meeting the mayor has missed since the primary election, I will state my comments on the record. So mayor, oh mayor, I hope you're listening. My comments are in response to the mayor's press conference remarks that were shared on Monday, October fourth to announce his two appointments to the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Review Committee. During the press conference, the mayor stated at least three times that council is not operating with any sense of urgency to make our five appointments to the board. Mayor, you have not exerted any sense of urgency in doing your job in a hundred and forty-seven days since May eighteenth. My colleagues have politely inquired about the mayor's absence and have received radio silence. There has been no urgency to respond. The audacity you have, mayor, in stating that council is not taking any action because the spotlight is gone. You only show up when there are lights, cameras, action. Facebook lives and press conferences are the only spotlights you subscribe to these days. It begs one to question, who is truly running this city? It isn't you. Urgency, you say, where was this urgency you speak of all last summer? When council worked through the summer to ensure Bill eight of twenty-twenty that established the review board was thoughtfully drafted with strong community input. You were a ghost again during the summer of twenty-twenty-one. A mother was killed as an innocent bystander on Berry Hill Street. Her killer was roaming the streets in a white sedan while you held a press conference to discuss your favorite snack of kettle corn. Please do not talk about council's concern for the public safety of the residents of the city of Harrisburg when it is clearly not a real priority for you. It is merely a matter of convenience. Urgency, my colleagues have kindly shared the number of vacancies within your administration. After months of vacancies, you've decided to fill a few as a matter of convenience for you. I said this last year, but I see that it's becoming a pattern. Mayor, you continue to use black people for your own political gain. Know that I will never support you using a black woman or man for your own political credence. I see through your tactics and I hope residents are paying attention too. You continue to belittle the intelligence of our residents. Urgency, the city has an influx of federal money from the American Rescue Plan. One lone council member asks about the plan every week, but has yet to receive a response. There is no urgency to utilize this once-in-a-lifetime funding to benefit the residents of the city of Harrisburg. Just two weeks ago, you sent a message stating that you will meet with each council member individually. We are ready and waiting to meet with you to discuss a spending plan for the American Rescue Plan funding that makes sense for the longevity of the city. The federal regulations state that community engagement is required. We must ensure that our residents are included in public discussions. Let's be clear, we are not shying away from our work or responsibilities. We've been here, we show up, and we always put the residents of this city first. Your absence and disdain for council is quite disrespectful. We will hold you accountable for everything you aren't doing. In any other job, if a leader is absent and not fulfilling the responsibilities of the role, the leader is fired. The residents of the city spoke loud and clear during the pres, primary election. Finish your term and move on with your. Finish your term and move on with your life. Urgency, I'll wait for yours. You have made the city's recent emergencies. You have not made the city's recent emergencies your urgency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. I mean, Ms. Powers.
Can I just say ditto? Thank you for saying that.
Ms. Green?
I, I, I don't know how to follow that. Everything that, uh, council and governor said is completely true. Um, I, I agree with everything you said. Uh, I would just like to remind everyone that, that we are accepting applications for the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Um, they're available online and they're available in person if you come down to City Hall. If you contact me, I will either mail a copy out. Um, someone called me the other day and asked if I would mail them a copy. So they're available to anyone who is interested. We are, um, looking to get this board started, but we will not make this a political process. We will not make this part of the election process. So, um, therefore, you can look forward to the appointments not officially being made until after Election Day, since there are press conferences being held just for publicity purposes. We're gonna make sure this is not a political process. Uh, also, there were two people recommended by the mayor to be a part of the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Uh, if they could get the information as to what police district they fall in, that would be very much appreciated as they do have to be separated into seven different police districts. And, uh, the addresses that I have are all blacked out. So we are unaware if they're in the same police precinct or not. That is all.
Okay. And, uh, Ms. Green, I did receive one. I gave, um, Mr. Petrowski that particular application today. Anyone else? Um, new business, Mr. Majors?
Well, I had a statement, but again, don't need to, uh, do that. I will just note, uh, for the record, uh, and a reminder for all of our residents that on, uh, Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, the City of Harrisburg, uh, City Council will be holding our trip, our annual trick-or-treat um, away at the, uh, at two of the fire stations on, uh, Sixth Street and on, uh, Thirteenth Street. So we look forward to seeing all of our, our residents there. And, um, and I think, uh, there's no need to, to make any additional comments.
Okay. Anyone else? New business? Okay, I do have one announcement that Mr. Mattson asked me to deliver tonight. And that is any amendments to the comprehensive plan, please council members submit them to Mr. Madison by Friday. Certainly, uh, said no one has submitted anything and he'll wait to Friday for any amendments or any additional comments or questions. And here, nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.